Hey.
I'm okay. Thank you.
Oh, you're with me?
I just had an email to be sent.
Thank you. The household is having some trouble.
Okay. Just what I had.
And that's three. Because I don't know. My grandson would like to. Yeah. So I might fall asleep.
I've had a lot of calls. Lots of people want to ask me how it's been. It's been taken between. Until they've already answered.
Oh, now. It's asking.
Uh, no.
Okay.
And I know.
Um, I think that's probably Angela. No, I think that's.
Lady Penny. Um, I know I said.
Yep. Yep, so that's where sort of all the ones. Get Angela feel this way better. But yeah, we tend to be.
I didn't tell you anything.
Good. Built up to that. We just got there. I don't think it's getting air jammed up to the drain.
Full house tonight.
I hope I said that right.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be busy between now and.
From the last time, I just decided to leave this on.
Did you do the workshop today? Is there a workshop here? Is there a worry? That's still in there. I still look at it too.
Uh, I'll be back in another meeting at some point.
Karen, when is the workshop?
I have no idea what works on March. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. The liquid is, that works. I'm glad you're.
I like the spark. It's very quick.
I love sparks. They're so warm.
Helpful.
Yes. I have to remember. I also like workshops. That's March. Yeah. It's not even February. It won't work. I have to worry about it closer to March.
Yes.
Well, we've done. Did you have a good weekend?
Um, yes.
That was a wonderful season.
I'm sure my husband did.
Yes.
He's the chair of Democratic Council Committee in the state. He's the meeting.
Oh, wow.
No, he's the head of the Flappy committee. And I'm the head of the Democratic.
That's exciting. You should see Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I suspect my son was a Democrat. Don't ask.
Maybe I'd.
It's like, maybe. This impossible is like that. Let's get this running straight.
There's no help.
Loaded for. Loaded for.
Democratic Caucus is on. It's just stuck out here. I've got them set up all for three times.
All centers.
I just. Oh, no. I didn't even know where you put it.
Something. Yes. Maybe not in there.
I'm ready for summer. I'm sick of it.
Okay. I just got stuff on the housing initiative. I have no idea where she came from.
Daughter's still out.
Someone must have left.
I saw her coming in the post.
Destroying the evidence.
These were all empty. I went down.
Now I think I'll send you someplace else.
Someone from the audience dumped it there. That's. It's a tree. So do we have a protocol then?
I don't know. When I went back. It's a tree.
That was last time. Just a little. Right. It's not good for anybody.
The first one did a good job.
The first one did a good job. Why don't we? Yeah. It's not good for anybody.
We don't contend that sound anymore, do we? Do we ever?
Chances of someone spacing. January 2nd. Same exact distance. I just gotta walk up here. That's why I was. Well, that's what, let's say last year. Especially. We had to stop and get read. Okay. Am I, is it not functioning? Apparently we haven't been asked to get it to work. He said wave at them when they're ready.
So we have a public process.
Apparently. I'm not sure why. And for some reason that. Nice name.
Is his wife with him or?
No. No.
Good evening and welcome to the January 29th, 2018 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Beale?
Here.
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes from the January 8th, 2018 meeting. Any discussion?
Yeah. I have a couple amendments. One is regarding item. Regarding Scarborough Downs. The western side of the watershed is called Willowdale Brook. And I'd like to add that I pointed out that Millbrook is proposed to be threatened. And lastly, on page six of 10, where it says Ms. Saunders stated it is important to protect the area watersheds, I'd like to add that it said and ask that the developer participate in any watershed management planning efforts and the applicant agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll amend my motion to include Ms. Saunders' comments.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number four, Black Point Holdings LLC requests a site plan review for a new multi-tenant building at 20 Black Point Road, Assessors Map U43, Lot 11. Would you like to introduce this one, Jay?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is a site plan application for the prior site of, was the Widow Walk, which many folks may remember here in town. This is in the TBC 2 district and the applicant is proposing to redevelop the site with a medical office building. Actually, that's one of the sort of critical distinctions that is worth talking about is the use of the building. As board members remember, we called this before you for a sketch plan a few months ago. And at that time, we really talked about, the board expressed some concerns with the access and the applicant's really looked to utilize an existing easement with the abutting assisted living facility. That actually, the easement was secured as part of that application review process, site plan application review process. And so the applicant is seeking to make use of that for access management purposes, but that is one of the things to talk about. And the reason I bring that up in terms of use is really the traffic engineer program is really designed around a medical office use and want to be sure in the narrative there was a suggestion of maybe some expanded uses beyond that. And just want to be sure we have a good understanding of exactly what those activities are gonna be. Again, because traffic was one of those items that the board had talked about. And there's also, the applicant is seeking for a little larger parking field than is typically required by our ordinances. But again, that's something the board will usually look at and try to determine based on the uses. And I think with that, what I'll ask is actually if Angela can chime in and touch on some of the detail, those detailed issues.
And before we throw it over to Angela, I believe staff received architectural plans just a few days ago. Is that right?
I believe it was Thursday afternoon. It was.
Okay. So I'll, I'll just suggest that for the board and the applicant that given that those were received after the deadline, we haven't had a chance to look at those. And given that there are plenty of other things to talk about, that we try and focus on stormwater access and some of those other things that are, that are on the table and sort of focus on that, given, given constraints there. So I'll hand it over to you, Angela.
Thank you. I'll start with the traffic and the site access, just to continue what Jay was, was pointing out. Goral Palmer did our, our traffic peer review and really the focus is around that left turn lane around Black Point Road and whether that really has the capacity where that shared access is. What was determined is that they were, the applicant is showing that they have adequate capacity as long as the traffic coming up Black Point Road is not blocking the entrance itself, which is where signage comes in. And so that's pointed out and it is on the plan regarding that piece of it. So really what Goral Palmer's memo talks about is that in their opinion, it's really the functionality of Oak Hill intersection, which is why we have our traffic impact fees to look at larger scoped projects like tackling Oak Hill for instead of having, you know, smaller projects coming through, having to deal with such a large task. So really, I guess I would ask the board to kind of focus around when Black Point Road does get queued up down to Winnick's Neck, which I know we talked about in previous meetings. Really, how does this site really impact that and how this specific site and how they get in and out of the site? Kind of really focus on that rather than Oak Hill as a whole. And then just as far as stormwater goes, this is a redevelopment site. So how the state and our local ordinance kind of looks at it as a lower permitting threshold. So stormwater permit for this is only a permit by rule because they are increasing impervious area, but not to the threshold that would trigger a larger permit process. And I do understand the sensitivity about where this, how they're maxing out really the site and where the stormwater facilities are close proximity to property lines. So what I have asked the applicant to do, which they did provide in the packet, is going beyond our typical 25-year storm event is what we design these systems to typically. They've provided information for 100-year storm event, which typically we look at that as saying, we don't really design to completely capture that 100-year, but show us that it doesn't impact significantly around it. And actually what they're showing, and I'm sure Nancy will speak to this, is that even in the 100-year storm event, the, the water level does not trigger going over the spillways, which is right in proximity to the property lines surrounding them. So that's just something to note that staff was aware of that, the concerns that might come up because of the proximity of those, those features. And then I think Jay might have mentioned about the parking, additional parking than what the ordinance required. So I just want to point that out and how that fits into stormwater. Obviously, the more impervious area, the more volume of water coming off the site. The applicant is showing that they are meeting pre-development conditions for the flow rate, but wherever you add impervious area, you're adding volume of water off the site. So that's my thing that I can talk to a little bit more if anyone has questions. And the last thing is I should point out is that this does trigger our post-construction ordinance. So there is requirements on the site to do inspection, maintenance and annual reporting to the town so that these facilities would have to be maintained and that gets reported to our office.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Sinclair.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My name is Nancy Sinclair. I'm with Sinclair Associates. I have actually quite a large team with me here tonight. So I wanted to take just a moment to sort of outline our presentation for you folks. And I think that as part of that sort of step process, a lot of the questions and comments that have been discussed so far will hopefully add some clarity to them. So first of all, Dr. Stuart Care is here, is in the audience. He is the applicant representing Black Point Holdings LLC. And as we've mentioned to you folks in our application materials, the anchor within this building is actually the new home for Scarborough Family Chiropractic. So their facility, which is on Unit 1 right now, will move over to here. It'll be a little bit larger, but the same types of services that are offered there will be offered here as well. There's some additional space in the building that would have an opportunity for a couple more tenants in that. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a minute. So as Jay mentioned, this is the old Widow's Walk site. I think it was back in 2013 maybe timeframe. The building and the barn was torn down. So the site is currently unimproved. And as Jay mentioned, we were, before you folks, actually in July of 2017 with a sketch plan. That sketch plan had a little bit larger building. And if the folks who were here during that time may recall, it had sort of a loop circulation pattern through the site. So the connection that you see on the northerly end of the site, which is right here, that's the same location that we had originally. But we actually had an in and out, right in, right out, basically opposite Thornton Road. As we've gone through the process and working with staff and reviewing the traffic circulation patterns and access along Black Point Road, that was eliminated and the plan that you see before you is the end result. So as I mentioned, we have worked with staff in the interim and it has taken a bit of time, but that is because we've done quite a bit of evaluation, particularly with regard to traffic. And so Bill Bray is here tonight to speak to you folks about traffic and I'll turn it over to him in just a couple of minutes. We also have Keith Smith here with Terry Dewan's office to talk to you folks about landscaping and lighting as proposed on the site. And we also have Deidre Peal, who is with Gaurin Turgeon Architects, who's the project architect. And I do understand that you received the building renderings late in the process and we're not asking for a formal deliberation, but we did want to introduce them to you to give you a feel for what we're looking at as part of the site improvements. So as I mentioned, the building's a bit smaller. The current building is now 8,776 square feet. The Scarborough Family Chiropractic will take just a little under 5,000 square feet of that space, leaving about 37, 38 hundred square feet for a couple of other tenants. So they're not, it's not a tremendously large space that would be available. We do expect that the tenant selection would be someone that would be comparable or complementary to the existing center so that, as we noted in our application materials, it could be a medical office, professional service, that type of thing. But again, we wanted to make sure that our trip generation that is associated with our analysis is still consistent with that. So any tenants that would come in would have to be consistent with what we had made for assumptions on trip generation for that. Parking has another comment that was made. We are proposing 53 parking spaces on the site. That's based on a parking ratio of about six spaces per thousand, which is in excess of the ordinance minimums, which would require about 36 spaces for this size building. The reason for that is that the applicant has worked with his broker and wanted to be able to provide sufficient parking for tenants that would be comparable to his type of use. And so with that, we are asking that the ratio be at six spaces per thousand square feet. That will allow us to take care of parking onsite for both the chiropractic center and any tenant space and keep aware of the fact that, given the location, we don't have access to onsite parking, on street parking, excuse me. We don't have access to any shared parking on any other adjacent facilities either. So this is, we do need to have the site be a standalone with regard to parking. We want to make sure that it is inviting for tenants to be able to lease the space and have a fully occupied building. So one of the things that we also wanted to talk to you about is stormwater. And we have done a analysis of the site. As Angela mentioned, we looked at the pre-development conditions and the post-development conditions. And there's a bunch of different standards that need to be met. You folks are aware of it, but not perhaps not everyone in the audience is aware sort of the process. But there's, in stormwater, there's basically two different categories. There's quantity, which is referred to at the state level as the flooding standard. And that's looking at pre-development peak discharge rates and post-development discharge rates. We did that analysis as part of our efforts. The other piece of it is quality. And that provides treatment, whether that's thermal benefits, gluten removals, those types of things. So there's two different categories that we're falling to play. As Angela correctly noted, given the relatively small size of this site at the state level, the only requirements that we trigger are for what's called a permit by rule for stormwater, which is a 14-day review period. And that review focuses on erosion and sediment control, housekeeping, maintenance, those types of things. The water quality aspect of this project is not triggered at the state level, nor is the flooding standard triggered at the state level. However, as part of our local review, we did also consider what's the flooding standard as well as providing some treatment on the site. So our program for stormwater looks at controlling the peak rate of discharge and for treating a portion of the site. Roughly about 50% of the impervious area has a water quality treatment best management practice. The entire rooftop of the building will have a roof drip line BMP. So runoff that comes off, the drip edges of the building actually is collected in a stone reservoir area along the face of the building. That reservoir drains by an underdrain and actually connects into our pipe system as part of that. So the treatment for the runoff associated with the rooftop is included in that BMP. The easterly parking area, which is right here, there's a catch basin right in the lower corner there that actually collects the runoff from that.
Could you turn that so we can see?
Sure.
Because I can see that one, but I can't see where you put them all.
Can everybody see them? So that catch basin that I mentioned, right in that corner there.
Jay's pointing, sorry, Jay's pointing to the cursor on the screen too, just for those who are watching from elsewhere. Thanks.
Excellent. I don't think I can, ooh, I can get to that one. I can't get to those screens, but I'll work on that one. So that catch basin that's in that lower corner right there, right in this corner here on the site, right in there, is what's called a grass underdrained soil filter. It is a treatment facility, if you will. It's, from the outside, looks like just a depressional area within the lawn. But what it does underground is it provides treatment for the runoff that is leaving that portion of the parking area. So that treatment does two things. One, it provides that water quality benefit that we talked about. But it also has, in addition to that, an available storage capacity to help control that peak flow rate leaving the site. So that's a piece of our stormwater management for that. And as Angela noted, we evaluated that. We're typically obligated to design for the 210 and the 25 year storm and demonstrate that we're meeting our requirements for that. But in looking at that facility, one of the things we also wanted to understand was if it goes beyond a 25-year storm event, what does the water surface elevation look like in the context of that spillway that you see? Can you talk to the ratings? Here we go. Right there. So that spillway is an emergency spillway. It's designed to function when the system has reached its capacity. In the 100-year storm event, our water surface is six inches below that. So we still don't even get to that emergency spillway in a 100-year storm event. That's an event that happens with a 1% chance of happening in a year. And that represents about eight inches of rain that's happening in a year. Actually, subsequent to our meeting with Angela, I actually took the system to a 500-year storm event to see what would happen with our system in that timeframe. Now, that's a two tenths of a percent chance of it happening. And in a 500-year storm event, we've got less than an inch over the top of that spillway. So that's a 500-year storm event and that's 12.1 inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period for that. So that's taking it well past the 25-year storm requirement for that. So as I mentioned, that's one piece. So that's treatment and attenuation. The other piece of it is underneath that parking lot, the remainder of the paved area for the site is actually piped into a series of three 36-inch diameter pipelines that are buried underneath the parking area. Those provide storage. That's that flooding continuation of control for that. Our outlet control structure is right there in that corner. And that controls how much water comes off the site. So as I mentioned, we are doing a mix of different things in order to provide stormwater management. We're managing the peak rate of discharge to the pre-development levels. And it should be noted that our pre-development level calculates based on what's on the site right now. It doesn't take into account the fact that up until 2013, there was a large set of buildings that were on the site. As a matter of fact, the impervious area associated with the existing improvements that were associated with the Widow's Walk is actually almost comparable to the size of the existing building now. So we didn't take that into account. We scaled it back and said, right now, this is an undeveloped site, so we're starting with an undeveloped site. And we are controlling our peak rates of discharge in accordance with the ordinance criteria to the pre-development levels. So stormwater in a nutshell, everybody loves stormwater. So right now, what I'd like to do is, oh, I just wanted to mention another thing on that. We have filed our stormwater permit by rule application with the DEP. That was filed last week. We do have a two-week review period for that, but we do expect that that approval will come in prior to the next meeting. So that will be a checkoff, if you will. We've also filed requests for a ability to serve water from the Portland Water District that's under review by their engineer. And, excuse me, we've also filed application materials with the sanitary district to request a similar. We spoke to the superintendent today. We expect that that ability to serve water will be forthcoming by the end of this week and will be on board for the trustees' review for that as well. So I did mention that we do have other folks here to speak. The first person that I'm gonna turn it over to is Bill Bray. And Bill's gonna discuss the process with traffic.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening. Bill Bray with Traffic Solutions. I'm gonna spend a fair amount of time walking through the details of the traffic evaluation that we've completed for this project. I'll elaborate a little bit further as I go along, but we have.
Selection would be someone that would be comparable or complementary to the existing center, so that as we noted in our application materials, it could be a medical office, professional service, that type of thing. But again, we wanted to make sure that our trip generation that is associated with our analysis is still consistent with that. So any tenants that would come in would have to be consistent with what we had made for assumptions on trip generation for that. Parking has another comment that was made. We are proposing fifty-three parking spaces on the site. That's based on a parking ratio of about six spaces per thousand, which is in excess of the ordinance minimums, which would require about thirty-six spaces for this size building. The reason for that is that the applicant has worked with his broker and wanted to be able to provide sufficient parking for tenants that would be comparable to his type of use. And so with that, we are asking that the ratio be at six spaces per thousand square feet. That will allow us to take care of parking onsite for both the chiropractic center and any tenant space, and keep aware of the fact that, given the location, we don't have access to onsite parking, uh, street parking, excuse me. We don't have access to any shared parking on any other adjacent facilities either. So this is, we do need to have the site be a standalone with regard to parking. We want to make sure that it is inviting for tenants to be able to lease this space and have a fully occupied building. So one of the things that we also wanted to talk to you about is stormwater. And we have done a analysis of the site. As Angela mentioned, we looked at the pre-development conditions and the post-development conditions. And there's a bunch of different standards that need to be met. You folks are aware of it, but not perhaps not everyone in the audience is aware sort of the process. But there's, in stormwater, there's basically two different categories. There's quantity, which is referred to at the state level as the flooding standard. And that's looking at pre-development peak discharge rates and post-development discharge rates. We did that analysis as part of our efforts. The other piece of it is quality, and that provides treatment, whether that's thermal benefits, gluten removals, those types of things. So there's two different categories that we're fallen to play. As Angela correctly noted, given the relatively small size of this site at the state level, the only requirements that we trigger are for what's called a permit by rule for stormwater, which is a fourteen-day review period. And that review focuses on erosion and sediment control, housekeeping, maintenance, those types of things. The water quality aspect of this project is not triggered at the state level, nor is the flooding standard triggered at the state level. However, as part of our local review, we did also consider what's the flooding standard as well as providing some treatment on the site. So our program for stormwater looks at controlling the peak rate of discharge and for treating a portion of the site. Roughly about fifty percent of the impervious area has a water quality treatment best management practice. The entire rooftop of the building will have a roofed-up line BMP, so runoff that comes off, the drip edges of the building actually is collected in a stone reservoir area along the face of the building. That reservoir drains by an underdrain and actually connects into our pipe system as part of that. So the treatment for the runoff associated with the rooftop is included in that BMP. The easterly parking area, which is right here, there's a catch basin right in the lower corner there that actually collects the runoff from that.
Could you turn that so we can see?
Sure.
Because I can see that one, but I can't see where you're putting them all down.
Can everybody see that? So that catch basin that I mentioned, right in that corner there.
Jay's pointing, sorry, Jay's pointing to the cursor on the screen too, just for those who are watching from elsewhere. Thanks.
Excellent. I don't think I can, ooh, I can get to that one. I can't get to those screens, but I'll work on that one. So that catch basin that's in that lower corner right there, right in this corner here on the site, right in there, is what's called a grass underdrained soil filter. It is a treatment facility, if you will. It's, from the outside, looks like just a depressional area within the lawn. But what it does underground is it provides treatment for the runoff that is leaving that portion of the parking area. So that treatment does two things. One, it provides that water quality benefit that we talked about. But it also has, in addition to that, an available storage capacity to help control that peak flow rate leaving the site. So that's a piece of our stormwater management for that. And as Angela noted, we evaluated that. We're typically obligated to design for the two-ten and the twenty-five-year storm and demonstrate that we're meeting our requirements for that. But in looking at that facility, one of the things we also wanted to understand was, if it goes beyond a twenty-five-year storm event, what does the water surface elevation look like in the context of that spillway that you see? Can you talk to the ratings there? Here we go. Right there. So that spillway is an emergency spillway. It's designed to function when the system has reached its capacity. In the hundred-year storm event, our water surface is six inches below that. So we still don't even get to that emergency spillway in a hundred-year storm event. That's an event that happens with a one percent chance of happening in a year. And that represents about eight inches of rain that's happening in a year. Actually, subsequent to our meeting with Angela, I actually took the system to a five-hundred-year storm event to see what would happen with our system in that timeframe. Now, that's a two-tenths of a percent chance of it happening. And in a five-hundred-year storm event, we've got less than an inch over the top of that spillway. So that's a five-hundred-year storm event, and that's twelve point one inches of rainfall in a twenty-four-hour period for that. So that's taking it well past the twenty-five-year storm requirement for that. So as I mentioned, that's one piece. So that's treatment and attenuation. The other piece of it is underneath that parking lot, the remainder of the paved area for the site is actually piped into a series of three thirty-six-inch diameter pipelines that are buried underneath the parking area. Those provide storage. That's that flooding continuation and control for that. Our outlet control structure is right there in that corner, and that controls how much water comes out of the site. So as I mentioned, we are doing a mix of different things in order to provide stormwater management. We're managing the peak rate of discharge to the pre-development levels. And it should be noted that our pre-development level calculates based on what's on the site right now. It doesn't take into account the fact that up until 2013, there was a large set of buildings that were on the site. As a matter of fact, the impervious area associated with the existing improvements that were associated with the Widow's Walk is actually almost comparable to the size of the existing building now. So we didn't take that into account. We scaled it back and said, right now, this is an undeveloped site, so we're starting with an undeveloped site. And we are controlling our peak rates of discharge in accordance with the ordinance criteria to the pre-development levels. So stormwater in a nutshell, everybody loves stormwater. So right now, what I'd like to do is, oh, I just wanted to mention another thing on that. We have filed our stormwater permit by rule application with the DEP. That was filed last week. We do have a two-week review period for that, but we do expect that that approval will come in prior to the next meeting. So that will be a checkoff, if you will. We've also filed requests for a ability to serve water from the Portland Water District that's under review by their engineer. And, excuse me, we've also filed application materials with the Sanitary District to request a similar. We spoke to the superintendent today. We expect that that ability to serve water will be forthcoming by the end of this week, and will be onboard for the trustees' review for that as well. So I did mention that we do have other folks here to speak. The first person that I'm going to turn it over to is Bill Bray. And Bill's going to discuss the process with traffic.
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening. Bill Bray with Traffic Solutions. I'm going to spend a fair amount of time walking through the details of the traffic evaluation that we've completed for this project. I'll elaborate a little bit further as I go along, but we have expended countless hours in not only trying to analyze it with the computer tools that are available to us, but we've also spent considerable time in the field watching traffic along Black Point Road, as well as traffic through the Oak Hill intersection. The proposed eighty-seven hundred-plus-square-feet medical office building can be expected to generate about twenty-one trips during the morning peak hour. Again, this is based on national standards for a medical office building. That's a trip about every three minutes during the rush hour in the morning. Of those twenty-one trips, seventeen of the trips will enter the site and four trips will exit. In the evening peak hour, the site will generate a few more trips, thirty-one vehicle trips, or a trip every two minutes, with nine trips entering the site and twenty-two trips exiting the site. In evaluating the project, we conducted several traffic counts, both at Oak Hill and as well as at the Atria Nursing Home driveway entrance at Black Point Road. We collected data between eight AM, uh, between seven AM and nine AM in the morning during the month of September at Oak Hill and the Atria driveway to capture the impact of school traffic on Black Point Road. In the evening, we collected traffic data between three o'clock in the afternoon and six PM, again, at both Oak Hill and the Atria driveway intersection. That data was collected late during the month of June in 2017, and the traffic data, the peak hour data from that was adjusted by state adjustment factors to approximate peak conditions during a typical summer month. In addition, as I stated, we had a second technician that was stationed at the Atria Nursing Home entrance. Their task was to directionally count trips entering and exiting that facility during the same hours. With the peak hour summation of the information, we took those peak hour values at the Atria Nursing Home and expanded those by approximately thirty-one percent to account for the present occupancy of that facility. Right now, the facility is running at about seventy percent of capacity, so we wanted to increase those numbers to account for full occupancy of the site. The next step in the process was to conduct a full safety audit on Black Point Road from Oak Hill to the Eastern Road intersection. We contacted the Maine Department of Transportation's Safety Bureau, requesting the most recent three-year traffic crash data for that section of Black Point Road. MDOT's report for the years 2014 through 2016 identified two high-crash locations along that section of roadway. The first one is Black Point Road between the Oak Hill intersection and Thornton Road. There was twenty accidents in the three-year time period, with a critical rate factor, which is simply the comparison of this location with the statewide average for a similar location, was one point nine six. Historically, as far back as I can recall, and I've done personally multiple reviews of this section of Black Point Road for the town and other development projects, this section has been a high-crash location with more or less the same number of crashes occurring every three, in every three-year study period, again, as far back as I can recall. Our investigations of the most current data, and again, going back historically, the predominant accident type that occurs is angle accidents involving left-turning vehicles coming in or out of the Citgo gas station. And in this particular case, ten of the twenty accidents were either left-turn vehicles entering the site or exiting from the Citgo gas station. In 2016, the town completed some improvements to that driveway intersection of the Citgo station. They squared the alignment of the driveway with Black Point Road, hoping to encourage people that were exiting the driveway onto Black Point Road to slow down in exiting and also allow them full visibility in both directions before they actually completed that turn. Additionally, they, the town implemented turn, left-turn restrictions during the peak hours at the driveway. Understanding the true effectiveness of this improvement really is something that needs to wait until DOT provides their next current three-year data of traffic crashes, which will occur sometime in late May or early June of this year. Excuse me. The second high-crash location was at the Black Point Road Eastern Road intersection. A total of nine crashes occurred at this location, and again, the critical rate factor was one point five two. A review of each of the police reports that were included in the nine vehicle collisions occurring at the intersection shows that four of the nine collisions involved either a pedestrian or a bicyclist using the crosswalk to reach one of the other side of Black Point Road. I didn't do that. I'll keep going. I don't, I don't really need it for my purposes, but I think there's a...
Thanks, Rick.
Good job. Thank you. Three of the four pedestrian-bicycle-related crashes occurred with vehicles approaching the crosswalk on the north of, south-to-north approach of Black Point Road. I went out in the field and watched traffic for considerable amount of time, actually, prior to conducting this traffic impact study on another project. And it might, my review at that time, and I would continue to suggest, that perhaps the addition of another flashing beacon facing traffic approaching from the south at the intersection, because in my opinion, the current flashing beacon in that direction doesn't provide the length of visibility that, in my opinion, should be provided. So I've suggested previously and continue to suggest that an additional flashing beacon, flashing beacon be added for that direction of travel. The next step in the process was to forecast both pre-development and post-development traffic values for both Oak Hill and the Atria driveway intersection. The first step in developing those development, post-develop, pre-development and post-development traffic values was to determine what other development projects that have either recently been approved by the town or are currently in the planning process, and the ones that would in fact impact both of these, of the study intersections. We identified nine projects that actually either limited or have direct impact on Oak Hill. The trips generated by each of those projects were combined, and we have added another two hundred and forty-seven trips during the AM peak hour. Again, those are projects that are not existing today, but in fact have been approved, whose traffic will circulate through Oak Hill and/or the Atria driveway intersection. And in the evening peak hour, we've added another two hundred and seventy-six trips to the existing traffic volumes measured at the intersection. Just to put that all into perspective, our analysis was based upon the, a peak hour volume of three thousand six hundred and three vehicles during the morning peak hour and a staggering five thousand and twenty-two vehicles in the afternoon. That's what's currently going through the intersection plus the additional two hundred and seventy-six vehicles. We've conducted a detailed capacity analysis of both intersections. We have used the standard traffic models that are accepted both in the state domain and nationally for conducting traffic analysis or operations at any intersection. As a summary overall, the proposed project has no measurable impact on intersection operation both at Oak Hill and has very minimal impact at the Atria driveway intersection with Black Point Road. In the AM peak hour, under pre-development conditions, Oak Hill intersection operates overall at level of service D, conditions with approximately forty-three seconds of vehicle delay. During the same time period, the Black Point Road approach operates at level of service F with eighty-three seconds of vehicle delay. I'm providing this information so that you can understand, hopefully, the very marginal difference in level of service and vehicle delay that the project creates. In the post-development condition for the AM peak hour, the intersection continues to operate at level of service D with forty-six seconds of overall vehicle delay, an increase of three seconds. And the Black Point Road approach operates with ninety seconds of average vehicle delay. Again, these are morning peak hour conditions. In the PM peak hour, similar results occur. Under pre-development, the average delay at the intersection is a hundred and seven seconds, and in the post-development, that increases by four seconds to a hundred and eleven seconds. Vehicle delay on the Black Point Road approach is significantly lower during the evening peak hour than what's found during the morning rush hour. Under pre-development, the value is fifty-three seconds of average vehicle delay, and that increases to sixty-two seconds in the build condition. Understanding quite well the concern of the town, and quite frankly, the concern of the development team on the operation of Black Point Road, especially during the morning rush hour. I have had the privilege of working for the town of Scarborough on reviewing multiple projects over the years, as well as conducting traffic surveys in the town for private developers. And the Oak Hill intersection has been a longstanding concern, operation at this intersection. So quite frankly, I want to be able to stand here this evening and state that we have looked at this, we've examined it, and quite frankly, what we're providing, in my opinion, is that we're providing a product with a very low generation of trips, and we're trying to clearly understand what's going on at Oak Hill and suggest some improvements that will change the operation at Oak Hill, especially during the morning peak hour. So with that, we conducted a second set of analysis for the morning peak hour. The traffic signal modeling equipment used to evaluate operations at an intersection provides a tool whereby the computer program will predict or optimize signal timing at an intersection. We took those values and we recalculated the capacity of the Oak Hill intersection, and quite frankly, I was very surprised at the overall benefit that simply changing the timings at the intersection can provide. For example, it was our, what we evaluated was that the amount of green time currently allocated to the Gorham Road approach, quite frankly, is a greater level of green time than was necessary. By simply taking some of that green time and reallocating it to the Black Point Road approach makes a tremendous difference in the level of service and delay on that Black Point Road approach. We provided the town with the existing signal timings that are presently operating at Oak Hill and compared those times with recommended or the optimized times developed by the computer. The results, as I said, quite frankly, quite surprising. We're able to reduce the delay at the overall intersection from about forty-six seconds down to thirty-four seconds, a significant improvement in overall operation at Oak Hill. And I can, I just want to stop here and just clarify. I, I'm personally, I think most of you know me pretty well, I'm not going to stand up here and make a statement that I can't support. And clearly, the information in the process that we've gone through, I'm very comfortable standing here this evening and expressing these opinions because I believe the information that we've concluded in fact does work. And the level of delay on Black Point Road, we can more or less reduce or cut it in half from what it is out there today during the morning peak hour. These recommended signal times do not distract from the coordinated travel band along Route One. In fact, it may actually improve it. It reduces the vehicle delay overall in the intersection, and most notably, it reduces vehicle delay on the Black Point Road approach. In my opinion, the average motors traveling Black Point Road during the time period of, say, seven to eight o'clock, or perhaps as late as seven-thirty to eight-thirty, will definitely notice a marked improvement in traffic operations on that Black Point Road approach at Oak Hill. We have suggested to the town that they implement these proposed signal timings as a pilot program, test them for a period of two weeks, evaluating their effectiveness during that two-week time period. And if they prove successful, or if they require some minor tweaking, do that and implement them to improve traffic operations at Oak Hill. A process, a part of the process of calculating vehicle capacity is also developing a queue analysis for different turn lanes, or even in some cases, the through-travel lanes on, at a specific intersection. We conducted that queue analysis as part of our analysis of both Oak Hill and the driveway entrance to the Atria Nursing Home. We developed that for both pre-development and post-development travel conditions for the Black Point Road approach. In the AM peak hour, and again, I realize that I'm not telling anything to anybody that doesn't already know this, that the vehicle queues on Black Point Road extend beyond the driveway entrance to the Atria Nursing Home. We have calculated that that queue length should be somewhere around seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred feet, when in fact, today, and I'm going to get back to this topic in a few minutes, but based on today's observations that I have conducted on the intersection, that vehicle queue for a period of maybe twenty minutes during the morning extends well beyond that seven hundred feet. And I'll explain in greater detail of what I believe the reason is for that. Implementation of the traffic signal timing changes that we've recommended significantly reduced this queue length. We can cut that queue length in half, pushing the queue well beyond the measured distance between Oak Hill and the driveway entrance. There's a space of six hundred and ten feet there today. It's our belief that we can get that vehicle queued someplace between three hundred and four hundred feet, again, freeing up the driveway completely from queued traffic waiting at Oak Hill. Part of our analysis also evaluated the capacity of the site driveway and Black Point Road, and I'll, I'll go through this quickly. The wait time for getting out of Black Point Road under both the pre-development The wait time for getting out of Blackpoint Road under both the pre-development and post-development condition is someplace between six and 15 seconds. Under post-development conditions, that increases slightly to as much as 20 seconds in the AM peak hour and about 15 seconds in the evening peak hour. If the recommended signal timing changes were implemented at Oak Hill again for the morning peak hour, the vehicle delay and the length of those queues are again reduced significantly. We also evaluated the left turn pocket for turning into the Atria driveway from Blackpoint Road. That is 100-foot storage capacity there for four vehicles. All of our measurements show that that never exceeds two vehicles or approximately 50 feet, leaving a balance of two additional spaces for queued up vehicles. As we've gone through this process, we've continued to be perplexed of why the long delays occur every morning on Blackpoint Road. We have analyzed the, using the computer models, we've gone back and double-checked them to make sure that we didn't make an error. And still, the answer keeps coming up that the queue length should be someplace between 700 and perhaps as much as 750 to 800 feet from Blackpoint Road, based on traffic volumes that are about 250 vehicles greater than what you see out there today. So to perhaps get a better understanding of what actually is going on, because in my opinion, and has been for a considerable time, that perhaps there's something mechanically or programmably wrong with the operation of the Oak Hill signalized intersection. On three different occasions, I sat out on Blackpoint Road in my vehicle off of the road and watched traffic during the peak hours on Blackpoint Road approaching the Oak Hill intersection. I'll give you the dates that I was out there, perhaps.
Bill, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you think you'll be done fairly soon? Because we, I, I-
I should be another-
Because we're going to have, we need to leave time for public comment and board deliberation, and we're already coming up on an hour into the meeting. So I appreciate that you have a lot to share, but I just want to make sure we-
I'll squeeze it. I'll squeeze it.
Appreciate it.
I just want to finish this one comment, but I think it's very, very important. The field studies that we conducted were on November 29th between 3:45 and 5:35 PM, again on November 30th between 7:00 and 8:31 AM, and again, on the final date, December 5th, where we actually took stopwatch recordings of the traffic cycle length and the green time length measured on Blackpoint Road. Again, I'll skip through this because the last thing that I want to just state is that we identified a defect or some sort of a out-of-sync problem with the traffic controller at Oak Hill. It is clearly there, there is no question about it. There is approximately 30 seconds of green time allocated to the Blackpoint Road approach during the morning peak hour, twice during that hourly time period. For a reason that I wasn't able to determine, that 30-plus seconds of green time dropped down to eight seconds. Well, when you have about a quarter of the average time that's typically provided, then clearly something's going to happen. And what happens within that very short period of time, traffic backs up to two or three times greater than what it normally is on that approach. I provided this information to Mr. Chase in a, in a letter that details the survey that we conducted out there, and it's my understanding that the town has reviewed the operation of the intersection from the controller cabinet, and based on what I was told, I think I'm quoting correctly, that there are opportunities that they found for improving the operation of that intersection. So I'll, in the, to try to be considerate of the time constraints, I'll, I'll leave my comments at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a feeling you might get a chance to answer questions later. Thank you.
Chairman, we do have two other folks that will speak briefly on that. The first is Keith Smith, who will talk about landscaping, and then Deirdre Pio with regard to the building itself.
Thank you.
Keith Smith, landscape architect, Terrence Warren Associates. So I'll, I'll give a brief overview of the landscape, and then we can get into further discussion later on. So I'm going to start off along Blackpoint Road in the front of the building. There exists one, two, three, four, five existing trees. The intention is to keep those trees on site. There's minimal grading out there. This one right there in particular may encounter a little bit of adverse grading, and we'll try to keep, but we, our intention is to keep those trees out on the site. In addition to that, we're adding two additional street trees along the way. We'll have some planting along the building. And in the parking area, there's three groups, two groups of shrubs. Those are Viburnums, which are flowering shrubs that get fairly sizable to provide some screening. And then behind that, there's three clumps of, clumps of ornamental grasses. And what they're going to do is provide screening as well of the parking, and at the same time, they're closer to the parking because they're perennials, they'll provide snow storage in the wintertime because you can possibly up top of them. The Atria, the existing woods are going to remain. So along the edge of the parking, I provided some native amiancher trees as well as some clumps of red fruit dogwood and some bayberry. So I'm trying to use native plants as much as possible and naturalize that edge with the existing woods. As you come into the site, I'm providing, where the green line, you know, around is where the limits of grading are essentially, so that would be new understory seating. And then I have some trees coming in there along the outsides. I'm using some native red oats in areas where there, where there aren't walkways. I like to use oak because of the, the acorns, I don't want to use them where there's walkways, so I try to fit them in where it's feasible. And that's an elm, Princeton elm. As we get into the site, we have, as Nancy mentioned earlier, the, the underdrain next to the building. So there's like a two-and-a-half foot section of stone. And then outside of that, along the front, I've provided a shrub base. There's going to be, and this is the north side of the building, so these are all shade-loving plants. So there's cletra, there's some rhododendron, and then there's some hosta along there. So the vegetation's not going to be real blooming, but it's going to be vegetated. There are some clumps of vasity which can handle some of the shade and also provides some spring flowering. And the corner treatments, those are perennials and some archeonmal grasses. And then these two sides that we're going to get into, this is where the buffering occurs. This is a residential section. So according to the ordinance, we need to provide some buffering. So what I've done, what I did while I looked at this, was consider, you know, the critical points of buffering. There's a residential section here, there's a residential section there, you know, and their views would be up this hill and across. So what I did was try to beef that up in those areas. As far as trying to think out what the best solution would be, what I came up with was a tiered system, trying to use both evergreen and deciduous trees. Being that the evergreen, it's impossible, because that's a fairly steep slope down on both sides, it would be impossible to plant a tree large enough to provide screening right up front. So my intention was to provide, you know, an evergreen layer and then a deciduous layer. The evergreen layer is going to eventually grow to a point where it's going to provide that buffering. But in the meantime, the deciduous is going to be almost immediate, and it's going to have at least seasonal buffering from views onto the site. And because they're lower, I think for the most part, it's, within a five-year period, it'll pretty much screen the majority of the buildings. Same thing on this side. Along here, there's some white pine that's continuous with the existing white pine and some spruce that are going to remain at that upper part of the site. So this clump right here is existing vegetation that's intended to remain. We will lose a couple spruce that are in this area, but I brought the planting buffer all the way up to that edge. So, so as you can see, we have a staggered series of white pine, and then I have some taller, I think those are maples right there behind that are going to provide that upper level of deciduous. In this area, because these are snow storage areas, both here and here, what I wanted to do was get the plants a little further away to provide enough storage. So in doing so, along here, I had to put the deciduous plants on the outside of it. It's not as ideal. I prefer them on the backside, but in this scenario, I used fir right here that can handle the shade a little better, knowing that these deciduous trees are going to provide a little more shade on those trees. Along the back, between the white property line and the green disturbed line, you'll see a strip of existing vegetation. There's a fairly substantial clump of trees right here which falls just at the edge of where the disturbance would be, and our intention is to retain that vegetation along there so that we do retain some natural buffer, buffer along that easterly side. And then up into the front lawn, there's a walkway that comes back to the building. We have perennials along the edge of the buil, building on both sides here, which is nice. Snow can be cleared off, and it's not going to be disturbing the plants. Provided a few ornamental trees on the inside. Here's a unit, a condensing unit, to which I've placed some lilac and some additional shrub planting. And that's essentially the landscape plan. On the lighting, I have five fixtures, one there, there's one there, one there, one there, and one there. And I had cut sheets and a photometric along with that. It's 18 feet high, it's a full cutoff fixture, and it should do the job with the next round. Now that the architecture is done, we're going to be coordinating that. So there'll be one re, further rendition that will show the fixtures on the buildings. So outside of that, I think that addresses a lot of the concerns. One other question in the comments, there's a culvert that goes under here, and I have adjusted that tree so that it's not interfering with the culvert. And there is a swale that runs around this edge of the site at the bottom, and that will adjust the location so that they no longer run in the swales there.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next up, we have Deirdre, who's going to talk about the architecture.
Deirdre Pio with Garen Turgeon Architects. I realize you didn't have much time to review any of the building, drawing the perspectives and elevations themselves, but we did want to speak to the design for future reviews that we will have. Working with the existing footprint that was developed and working with Dr. Kair on his program, we came up with a design that we felt was in scale with the residential neighborhood. And we looked at the approach in terms of... The view here is coming up from Blackpoint Road, and this view here would be the view facing the parking lot. So would be the main entrance for the doctor's office and the main entrance for the future tenants in the back. We wanted to create an aesthetic that met the doctor's vision along with what we thought would be appropriate for the neighborhood, being a friendly neighbor ourselves, and wanting to see low-sloping roof lines. We tried not to, on this elevation here, create a lot of gable ends to soften the, what you would see for building massing. We're also proposing and working, as we develop the exterior elevation and materials further, we are introducing multiple levels of material. The stone on the bottom facade of the building, shingle style along with clapboard, and in addition to the landscaping, we'll also look at how we treat the facade as you go around the building, knowing that there's slope and what you'll actually be seeing from Blackpoint Road, in addition to the neighborhood as well. We want to be respective of what the neighbors are seeing and viewing for the building aesthetic. We're still working through specific locations for windows, but the size and scale that you see here is, for the most part, what we were going to approach for the final design. So not to take up too much time, I know it, it was low on the list to review, but I did want everybody to have an opportunity to see what it looked like. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chairman, well, that, that concludes our presentation. We're here to answer any questions that you may have, and I understand you'll be opening up to public comment now.
Thank you. Yes, and before we do open it up to public comment, just a reminder, if you want to say something, please come on up, introduce yourself, give your address. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Please try not to be too repetitive, and please address any questions or comments to the board and not the applicant. And with that, I will open up the floor.
My name is Jeff Jones of Jones and Warner, and I'm here representing the Oak Hill Condo Association. And I just want to make sure that, I've submitted a letter, and I want to make sure it made it in the blue packet.
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to labor my points.
Thank you.
But my point on the stormwater is, this is a grass, a grassy area that's just depressed, and all those calculations might work in July and August, but they're not going to work in January and February when the ground's frozen, and there's snow. Where they're doing their snow storage is right exactly where, next to where the, one of their, one of their grassy underground stormwater filters exist. So that stormwater, once it freezes up, the ground freezes, all that water's going to run down onto my client's property. That's not going to, that's not going to be the same efficiency in Jan, January, February as if they're saying it's going to happen in July and August. The, the buffering is inadequate, they're, 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 they want to put in five-to-six-foot evergreens. Well, the topography of that, it slopes dramatically down from the back of the building. So with 18-foot pole, poles for the lighting, which is shining directly towards my client's property instead of towards the building, that, that's going to be shining directly onto the condos and our property because of the slope. So the buffering there at five or six feet of evergreens isn't going to come close. The top of those trees are going to be basically at the, at the first floor of that building. So it's not, it, we're going to be getting the noise and the light pollution. So the traffic, I don't know if this, if the traffic safety issue can be solved with lights and tweaking the light at Oak Hill. I mean, we've all in this room have seen it just keep getting worse and worse on Blackpoint Road, and then I don't know with that, what the breaking point is going to be, but I think this board has to consider that as to whether this is a good project, but just in the wrong location. And again, they've, they've made no commitments about the tenants, so if you put, they're asking for a lot more parking spots, which is more impervious surface, which is more runoff toward my client's property. So the more parking spots, the more cars, the more traffic. And so we think that, that there should be a reduction of those, because again, they only state that their goal is to have medical tenants. It doesn't say that that's a restriction. And so if you have a high-volume tenant that comes in as one of those other two units, it could be a real issue, and I think we really have to have some recommendations on that as well. So I, there's two other board members that want to speak tonight because they are actual condo owners behind and about the property, but I just wanted to put out basically what they- put out basically what the board's feeling was.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jan DiMaro, and I live at 22 Black Point Road, and I'm president of Oak Hill Condo Association. And I would just like to mention, again, my concern about the traffic. To leave our driveway and take a left turn is virtually impossible. I work early in the morning and come home around the 5:00 rush hour. Turning into Black Point, into the Oak Hill Condo Association, taking a left into there is dicey as well. The study that they were talking about, they mentioned September and June. As we all know what the traffic is like in July and August on Black Point Road, it's really difficult, makes it very difficult to get out and into our association. The other thing I wanted to mention is on Route 1, I sat in that traffic waiting to turn onto Black Point Road, and what I've seen is a lot of cars that are backed up at Hannaford that are coming up the turn lane that isn't a turn lane, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Pam Joy, and I live at 22 Black Point Road as well, and one of the unit owners. And I know that we've talked a lot about the water drainage and the landscaping, and I know that, you know, a lot of the data, it makes perfect sense, but from owners who live there, hear the stories, hear what's happening. Since the development of Atria, we've had to spend another $3,500 putting in drainage at the foot of the hill in front of our condos. That's new water that's coming down, increase in water drainage that we didn't have to do before. So that's never happened. We can see the water increasing and dropping down into that. I'll use the dry bring up here. Give me a shot at it. But I just, I know you know this, we're...
All I'll ask you is if you can just swing that mic around so that...
Yeah, okay.
Like we can hear, our big TV audience can hear you.
Well, I just, yeah, I just want to point out that this is the lower parking lot. So it goes down, and here's the lower parking lot, goes all the way over here. And we are finding a dramatic increase in water drainage coming down from the road, down into that area, and coming across the end of the back part of that property, coming down into the fenced-in area we have back there. I'm not, you know, I can't say that's from Atria. I can't say definitely if that's from widening the road, but something's happened. And we are seeing a lot more water runoff. We'd like to make sure we're protected, so the next time, if any of this happens again, that someone else would have to pay for this extra drainage we're having to install around our condos. The condos got completely flooded out, the basements got completely flooded. So not only did we pay for the drainage, but there had to be insurance and, you know, repairs happen with that particular issue. So that is our concern, and as Jeff noted, I don't know what the winter holds, but where all that runoff happens, right there, that's our road. So that's going to come right on our road, that we have to keep plowed in the wintertime or keep free of excess water in the summertime. It's going to be, continue to be a challenge and extra cost to our operations. The other thing, the landscaping, as Jeff noted, we do need higher and greater privacy trees, and just to be able to hold more of that groundwater. I mean, we're putting in, I don't know how many square feet of parking lot tar, and that's a steep hill, and that's going to, that's just going to make it even worse. And I guess when we saw this development going on, or it was up for sale, and knowing downtown rules, I guess we were surprised with additional parking spots. I assumed that there would be parking that may be consistent with the upper side here, but to have that large of hot top behind the building, going right down to the foot of the hill, going, you know, and not being captured and put into that pond that was created for Atria, I don't know how that would happen, but it's just going to just flow right through. And we do have condos behind us, and already the wetlands in behind on that side, I've watched the last couple of years I go walking back there, is getting increasing. So I just would like someone to take a look at that, because it's going to cost, if this continues to increase with some of these developments. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Going once? Okay. Well, thank you for those comments. As always, we'll do our best as a board to make sure those are addressed through some combination of our own discussion and Q and A with the applicant, as well as any future action and deliberation with staff going forward. As I think it was clear from the top, there's going to be no formal action taken tonight. There are a few loose ends out there that the applicant detailed. So this is really for us to see and hear all this information, and for us to deliberate as a board, and then we'll see where things stand. So with that, Nick, would you like to get us started?
Sure.
That's a rhetorical question.
I'm going to suggest that we let our stormwater specialists have a fresh crack at this, but I'll, just on the surface, I do have a question in general. The change in the condominium water flow that's being observed on the ground by the owners, is that seasonal? Is it regular? Is it...
It's, well...
No, sorry, you can come back up to the podium quickly. Sorry.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's necessarily seasonal. It's when we're getting some of these heavy rainstorms that are going on, that they're just much more significant water running down that hill. So it's happening year-round, and it's just something, and settling down at the foot of the hill with those parking lots. Obviously, in the wintertime, that's freezing up and becoming more challenging for us, but it's been increasing. You know, in the last couple of years, it's gotten, it's gotten much worse. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I just kind of want to get a sense of timing.
Yeah, I wish it was a certain time of year, but no, it's, and again, it's, especially when those big storms happen. The one we had a little while ago, just a few weeks ago, again, it's, you can see the puddles, and you can see the, you know, the drainage coming right down, and it's, actually, it's eroding, erosion in our driveway now. We've had to fix the driveway, because the water's coming right underneath the tar and taking that away as well. So we've had to put down some extra tar on the driveway to fix that, to keep it, to keep it addressed. And I see when it comes down the hill, it will leave it now, start to take a bank to the right, and we have another hill, you know. So if you've been in there, but it's quite a little stream that's happening more and more now. Again, it's, I don't know what the factor is, but it's new.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. St. Clair, I may, have you had an opportunity to go down and try to look at some of the situation back there, and just through observations or field studies? Can you tell me what you've been finding and what you may think that leads to a condition like that?
We received a letter this afternoon.
Okay.
And so we can certainly take a look at things. I did look at the original design plans for the Atria and their detention area. It looks to me that the outlet is not directed in that location. So I'm not sure at this point. I don't have a definitive answer for you as to what that issue might be, but that's not part of our purview as well. So we'll certainly do what we can to help, and we certainly will do what we need to do to meet the standards for our site. But I can't, at this point, answer any questions as to what might be the root of that issue.
And you're confident, your studies that you've had for your site, that stormwater overflow or erosion, you're mitigating that with the systems that you explained earlier since this evening?
We do. We have done the analysis for the pre and the post-development for our site in particular. We've looked at that scenario, and, Jane, do you have the colored one of our site plan?
I do not. The thumb drive doesn't seem to...
Oh, okay. So anyway, if you can go back up one in that PDF.
Oops.
The other way.
The other way.
There we go. So as I mentioned in the presentation earlier, in this back parking lot, you see those three pipelines? There's three 36-inch diameter buried pipes underneath the parking lot. And that is designed to collect and hold back the runoff from the parking areas as part of our stormwater management plan. So right where, oop, Jane, right where his cursor is, there's an outlet control structure that controls for the different storm events, that controls the rate of release, and it comes out here. This area that's been alluded to is, this is the grass under drainage filter, it's not the grass under drainage filter. It's actually the outlet, and it's a stone burn level lip spreader. So it is designed to disperse runoff in a sheet flow pattern off the site. The grass under drainage filter is in this location here. That provides treatment for this portion of the parking lot and flood flow control for that portion as well. So we are looking at the entire impervious area, the entire developed area of the site as part of our stormwater analysis. So we've got a combination of ways to handle that additional flow and control it to the pre-development levels on our site.
Thank you. And then, as far as, you know, I appreciate not having another curb cut on Black Point Road. I think that's, it's a great move on your part to, you know, acquire the easement, have access to the property by those means. So, you know, I like what you're trying to do there. As far as the traffic goes, what, and I don't want to get too deep into this, what is the likelihood of actually changing the optimization of that signal? And not that I really personally feel that you need to be altering the entire intersection to accommodate the one property. I think that's probably a bum deal. But if you found something during your exploration, what is the likelihood that a change could be made? Is it relatively easy? Is it nowhere chasing the state for a few years? What is the process?
I think Angela might be in a good position to answer that question as part of an ongoing initiative the town has, so...
Yeah. So we actually had another traffic engineer that has been out, and going through the cabinet and the phasing and the timing, is providing recommendations. This is also, obviously, the Route 1 corridor, very sensitive with the coordination and timing, and so we are actually looking into, as the town, a master plan for the Route 1 corridor as well, the traffic signals. So changing one signal on that corridor has a domino effect. So we don't do it lightly. It's something that we really need to investigate, because the last thing we want to do is cause issues up and down north and south of Oak Hill that just bottlenecks other places. So we have heard from Mr. Bray, and he's actually been at our transportation committee meetings, and has been part of a lot of the work that we've done through that committee with the Oak Hill intersection. And so we are waiting for a memo spelling out those recommendations to be able to implement some of this maybe low-hanging fruit. I think this is a bigger thing than just changing a few green times from lanes, though. It's more of a master plan for the entire Route 1 corridor.
I was also just going to offer, I think this is a good opportunity to sort of talk about the ordinance requirements in terms of what the expectations are on an applicant as opposed to the community. Where the town has identified that we have a number of failing intersections, which over the course of our growth over the last 20, 30, 40 years, have led these intersections to be at the levels that were indicated before, that rather than having the last person in have to fix a problem that is, you know, is just, is too big for one person, we have traffic impact fees. And so really, what this applicant's responsibility is to Oak Hill proper, is to pay those impact fees for every new trip generated. But I think, you know, then the real question to the board is really the safety and functionality at the driveway intersection itself, and be sure that that doesn't increase the, or exacerbate the issues. So I know...
I could just add one thing to that, the specific comment with regard to the driveway entrance itself. As you've heard throughout the discussions, we are sharing our access with the existing entrance at Atria. There is an easement that benefits this property that allows us to have that access at that point. And one of the results of the discussions throughout the staff review is to actually add a sign that we put on our site indicating not to block that driveway, so that if we are dealing with queues, that is something that is an extra reminder to people in the Oak Hill area not to block the driveway. But I did want to also point out that just as the town is looking at, this is sort of a global issue and a global solution, we do feel confident that as a result of our analysis, particularly Bill's observations of sort of the idiosyncrasies that are happening at that intersection, that don't seem to meet any sort of program issues, that I think there are opportunities for a solution, and it will come in time, hopefully a short time with a memorandum. But I think there's sort of two levels here. One is, can we optimize it? And then the two more, I think, achievable is, can we fix the problem, if there's a problem with the hardware itself, that type of thing. So those are the types of things that I think we're moving forward with, and we're confident, based on our evaluation, that there are opportunities that will help things in that area. And that's, regardless of whether we move forward or not, that's a solution for the community as well.
My last couple would be thanks for the sneak peek at the architecture. It looks great just from a superficial view here, and interested to hear how the rest of this discussion goes tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
I would echo Nick's comments regarding the building. I think it looks really nice. Obviously, stormwater and the traffic are the issues. And I do have a question for the condo people, so maybe one of you could walk up there. But in the meantime, Nancy, on that, do not block the driveway. That's going to be to alleviate vehicles, you know, leaving Oak Hill, going down Black Point and turning left. Is that, is that the purpose behind that?
No, it's placed on our site.
Yes.
Facing southerly, so it's northbound traffic on Black Point Road, allowing people to turn in.
Right.
Creating a gap.
Yeah, people who are heading towards the intersection.
Correct.
To leave that entrance clear, so people coming, you know, off of the intersection heading down there.
Yes.
Can get in.
Yes.
Now, there's two lanes of traffic right there, I believe. So you feel pretty confident that's going to work?
We do. Do you want to comment on that?
Just, it's one lane headed up the hill. It turns into two lanes shortly thereafter in the intersection.
It's not two lanes right there?
No, it's just one in each direction, plus the left turn lane into the Atria entrance. So just a total of two through lanes, and then one turn lane into the Atria.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, my observations in the field, when I was there for about a part of four hours, quite frankly, in all cases, people would automatically stop short of the driveway and allow someone to come out or get in appropriately. I never saw any occurrences when people were sitting there for long periods of time. There were people who were actually gracious enough to stop and let them out. So again, I hope the sign just becomes a reminder that people would, you know, try to do that when necessary.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Joy. I'm just kind of curious, before Atria was built, did you have any, you had no stormwater, no drainage problems or anything like that?
I'm not going to say that. I've not been there years and years and years, and someone else maybe can speak to that. But since I've been there, there weren't any drainage issues on that side. There's, on another side of the complex, further down, closer to the Eastern Road, there may have been something in the past, but not where we're, not, not right there. next to the driveways. That's, that's all that would occur.
Okay, because as I recall, that whole property there kind of drops down dramatically down towards Eastern Trail, Eastern Road. I'm just, I'm just wondering, when the Widows Walk was there, I'm just wondering whether this actually, this project could actually alleviate some of the problems that might be happening, because this looks like it's pretty extensive stormwater management. So, just kind of curious about, I don't know.
I guess, one thing I would point out, I think I said in my opening comments, was that whenever you increase impervious area on a site, you can control the flow coming off it, and how quickly it comes off. That's where we talk about peak flows, and, and you can have a large storm, but like, make it bleed out slowly. But the actual volume of water will always increase with the increase in impervious area on a site. So, any additional development needs more volume of water.
Okay. If I can ask, Nancy, one more question. Is the flow of water, the stormwater, is it now like where Atria is? Is it going down towards, say, Starbucks in that area? Or is it going down towards Eastern, Eastern Road? Do you know?
I, I have not looked at their, like Nancy was saying, their pond does have an alfalfa, and there is a large wetland complex behind that pond. So, I'd have to look at it to say.
Okay. Is that, is that the pond right there, that gray, gray area?
It has a pond.
And we do get annual inspections and maintenance logs from the Atria, that their pond is being maintained and it's functioning properly.
Well, that, and just to interject, if you don't mind, that was going to be just a really specific question that I had for Angela, was whether there was any reason to think that the Atria stormwater system was not functioning the way it was designed and approved? Because if we don't have any reason, any factual basis for that, then you can have a lot of anecdotal discussion. And of course, we appreciate all the feedback, but I think we'd be really careful about trying to ground things as much as possible in verifiable data. So, there may be some additional legwork, fieldwork to do, but that was just a general thought that I had.
Okay. Just the last, last thing now, maybe to Jay. During, if we were to approve this, could there be a condition as to the type of tenants?
Yes, so I think that was, yes. The, the traffic, I think, generation will really sort of be the driver of what users can be at the section. That is something the board could look at.
Awesome.
Thanks, Roger. Susan?
Thank you. Well, I think it's happened. It's a pretty rich critical mass. We all knew it was going to happen. Thank God we have a impact fee, because it's going to take an enormous amount of money, a lot of time, a lot of patience, and a lot of creativity to do something about the intersection of Black Point Road and Route 1. I don't pretend that this one additional building development, you know, is going to make that much of a difference right now. But, I don't know. I live on Black Point Road, and the, the times that Mr. Bray talked about, that they studied, and what the trips were, I think they're probably absolutely accurate. But I experienced things such as coming down Black Point Road from Route 1 at 2:00 in the afternoon, and the cars are backed up down to the end of, where it turns to go across the bridge. Why? You know why? Because people are using Black Point Road as a cut-through from South Portland and Cape Elizabeth. And when they come up Black Point Road, they're coming to turn left to go south, rather than doing all the other things that are available. Now, I know. What do I know? Well, I live there, and I watch it day after day after day. So, how does that relate to this particular development? Well, in subtle ways. I think that if we do nothing but take Mr. Bray's observations about the fact that the light itself may not be working adequately, and clean that up as a step in the right direction. But I also understand that what Angela is saying is really big, because the way to solve this problem is not just at Black Point Road, because this is Route 1. And you do anything at Route 1 and Black Point Road, you've got to figure out what you're going to do all the way up and down Black Point Road. And now that, again, this is a huge problem. I'm not blaming the applicant, it's just that we all knew something was going to come along that was going to make this happen. So, I see this traffic as being number one on the hit parade, as to how to take care of it. And because I live so close to this, I'm going to be very, 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 very picky. And I bet I'm not going to be the only one. The next thing about stormwater, I don't pretend to understand stormwater, because we have experts about stormwater here on the board and on staff, and I'm sure that they can figure this out. The only thing I really do want to go on record as approving is that, first of all, I want to urge staff to work with the applicant to write into their.
Conditions?
Thank you. A condition that it be medical offices. Okay? Just, to me, that's a given. The other thing is to cover the expenses that might incur to the people who live below, because as Angela says, they're doing, the applicant is doing the best they can, and with some very sophisticated ways of holding the water back and releasing it under controlled circumstances. That would not have happened a few years ago, because the science wouldn't have allowed it, but here we are. And I think that's very exciting. But it's going to come out. It is going to filter out. And there has to be some kind of a situation in this permission for them to have their permits, that says that there has to be a way of observing, noting, studying, I don't know what the word is, what happens after a major storm, maybe it's how many, how much water there is or whatever, to investigate what's going on at the bottom of this. Okay? I just think that they have a right to ask, to have the applicant bear some responsibility. And I, at this point, I don't know how that would look, but that's just my feedback. What else? Oh, I'm known as a landscape lady, so, landscape. White pines. I just spent $2,000 cutting down white pines. Now, why would I do that? Because they're so big. Oh, because every, my neighbor is looking at me, because he gives me garbage every time he sees me, about the fact that I cut down white pines. But it's because they die from the bottom up. They, you know, hemlock doesn't do that. Okay? But white pine dies from the bottom up. So, if you're down below where these people live, and you're looking up the hill, very soon, I mean, you know, I'm old enough to know it doesn't, what soon is, you're going to be looking right through blank trunks of white pine. So, wherever those white pines are being put in for buffer, take another look, plant something else in addition to, I suggested it be hemlock underneath those white pines, so that as the white pine drops, there's going to be something underneath that will provide some buffering. I don't know, there were other things. I think the building is fine. There's nothing brilliant about it, there's nothing unique about it. Looks like everything else has gone up in Scarborough in the last 10 years, but it meets the, it meets the ordinance, so I don't have much to say about that. And I have to laugh. I mean, this is not a funny situation, but I have to laugh. Really? Putting up a do not block the driveway sign is going to have an impact? You've got to be kidding me. How many times have I seen people almost get creamed coming out of the gas station? I almost got creamed trying to come out of the gas station. I don't do it anymore. No more going in there with that gas station, thank you very much. I don't know how long it's going to be for somebody coming out of the Pizza Place, Amato's, to have a meal. This is a terrible intersection. It's going to be the worst, the worst one in Scarborough. There's nothing about it that's good. It's horrible. But you're going to put up a little sign that says, do not block the driveway, and that's going to do it. I do admit that people can be very nice. I, I am. I stopped to let people into the condos. I stopped to let people into the gas station. But when you're dealing with, what was that figure? I can't remember the figure, but it was a thousand or something people. Really? It's not going to work. It'll look cute, and it'll get all battered up by the, by the snowplighters and, you know, it will do absolutely nothing, so I'm not impressed. I'll have them that up. Go on, thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah. I was very glad to hear that Angela had you explore the 100-year storm, because that was my first note. What about 50 and 100-year storm events? So, thanks for doing that. I, I really caution you, though, on, on saying that a 50-year storm event or 100-year storm event is only going to have a 1% chance. It's just not the way it is these days. So, we've got some real complexities going on here, and some things that we're trying to figure out. And some of them are where all the discharge points are from this site. And I like where Roger was going, as far as maybe this will help, maybe this will be better than pre-development. But I think what, in addition to the additional impervious cover that Angela's talking about, is we're having, we have, instead of the stormwater being discharged evenly throughout the site, we're now collecting it and directing it to certain outlet control structures. And how many outlet control structures do we have at this point, Nancy?
There are two within the site.
Okay. And they're one from the underground storage?
One is to control the underground storage in the parking area. That's correct. That's, my pen ran out of ink, so apologize for that. That outlet control structure is right up in there.
Okay. And where's the, where does the underdrain soil filter?
There's an outlet control structure right there for the grass underdrain soil filter. So, the underdrain comes in the downstream end of that outlet control structure, the 6-inch pipe. Then there's an inlet to that structure right here. There's an orifice, I believe it's 2-inch diameter, that controls the flow, the water surface elevation in this area.
Okay.
And then that pipe comes out there. That one comes there. The two meet in that swale area.
Okay.
With the stone burn level lip spreaders right there.
So, the point, I guess, that I'm making is that, that these two areas are going to have a tremendous amount of volume coming out of that. And did Angela talk to you about the orifice being that small, 2 inches? And the problems, what is it, getting clogged and things like that?
Both of the outlet control structures have a panel on them that is a screen that is intended to protect for clogging.
Okay. And the drip line trench system, is that getting piped also to the same underground storage area?
The roof drip line BMP around the perimeter of the building, right there, the footing drain ties in again to the downstream end of that outlet control structure.
Okay. And roof drip line trench, underdrain soil filter. And the level lip spreader, how far of a setback do we have from the property line where that is discharging?
I haven't measured it. I would believe it's probably on the order of roughly 10 feet to the downstream edge of it.
Okay. And I guess my point in, in going through this with you, Nancy, is that it's a fairly complex system. And I'm going to ask that the HydroCAD model be peer reviewed by either Angela or Woodard and Curran, because I'm seeing on my map, I'm sorry, sheet, on sheets 12, sheet 12, that there's only one study point, SP1.
Correct.
Okay. And, and yet, I, I think we're talking about there's an easement, there's sort of like an off-site easement that has a culvert and some, some other things in the northern part of the site, where, remind me, is there a catch basin up there, too, that's feeding into this?
That basin?
Yep.
You look, it's a field inlet with a beehive grate.
Yep.
It's right there.
Right.
It provides crossover. So, in our pre-development conditions, we looked at the site and what was at the downstream end of the site as our study point. In the post-development condition, our post-development improvements included this portion of the driveway as part of our program. So, this field inlet and cross culvert is to collect the flows that were coming down off the Atria site and coming down in this area. So, this off-site area is collected in that field inlet, directed over to here, and that's an inlet to the Atria's pond. So, their off-site flow, we're not adding any new flow to it. It's just simply collecting what was on there off-site. We would be impounding it if we didn't put something underneath that driveway. So, we put a field inlet and a, and a structure across to come into that inlet to that pond.
And where does the northern parking lot drain to?
The northern parking lot is collected in a basin right there, so drains down here.
Yep.
You can see the channel there. You can see it coming down to that point there. That's part of that piping system that's controlled by that outlet control structure and stored in those three 36-inch diameter pipes that are each 130 feet long.
Yeah, and I just, I, I guess, but I, I heard you say that only 50% of the impervious cover is.
Treated.
Treated.
Correct. Treated.
Treated. So, is it still all stored? Is 100% of the impervious cover stored?
100% of the impervious cover is attenuated as part of the plan. Yes.
And, let's see. I had another comment about the buffer, the buffers, the tree buffers. I, I was reading the, I was reading the comments before we got this letter today, so, so I was sort of on the same page with my colleague, Ms. Ogless, about the vegetation and making sure that there is enough. And the public brought up a good point about the 18-foot poles and the 5-to-6-foot trees. So, is that sort of existing buffer along the southerly and easterly property lines, I'm sorry, the existing vegetation, is that really enough to meet the ordinance requirements for landscape requirements?
Down, down on this end?
Mm-hmm.
On the east end?
Yep.
Like I said, right, right in that section, there's a large clump, it's deciduous trees, it's not evergreen trees. So, so it does filter.
And how will that be marked off so that it's not cut during construction?
We can probably.
Yeah. Let's make sure that that's not cut down. And.
And then, in this section, it's all evergreen. And, and to address Susan's, I'm not a white pine fan either. The existing trees that are out there, there's a lot of white pine existing. I don't use them a lot. In this particular zone, just to kind of continue this line, is why I used them to match into the existing buffer. And on, and on the lower part down here, you know, it's kind of away from everything and kind of naturalized with the rest of the vegetation, and that's the only reason I used them. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of them either.
Can you talk about where snow storage is, so that it won't be compromising either the, the new vegetation or the stormwater control structures?
The, the snow storage is off the edge over here.
Okay.
There's some storage here.
I would, I would also recommend that that go in the post-construction maintenance plan for stormwater, that winter maintenance be identi, I'm sorry, winter snow storage and winter maintenance be addressed as part of the post-construction requirements. I think that's getting close to all I had.
Yeah. And the, and the light fixtures are full cut off, so they should not, you know, have horizontal wear in the embodied property.
And so, I just want to draw, draw to the applicant's attention, in the site plan review, ordinance G, number five specifically, that drainage system shall be designed so as to not impact streets, adjacent properties, downstream properties, and local soils and vegetation. The system shall also consider and incorporate upstream runoff that may pass over the site. Has, has, was that included in your model, upstream runoff?
There is a curb line along Black Point Road, and the sidewalk, newly constructed sidewalk along Black Point Road is basically the limit of the upstream area on that side.
Okay.
The site slopes in a general easterly direction, as you can see from the topography, and we talked a little bit about that upstream area that's off-site, and we're handling that.
Okay. And in a, I guess, in one last editorial comment, looking at the traffic study, you know, that there's something sort of inherently wrong with the traffic signal. I think it's that models don't account for distracted driving, people sitting in traffic and waiting an extra five seconds to get going before they move through the intersection. So, I'll just leave with that, and again, ask that the HydroCAD model be, be peer reviewed by Woodard and Curran or the town engineer.
Also?
Thanks.
Rachel?
Yes. Frequently, when I leave a, a meeting, I end up saying. Frequently, when I leave a, a meeting, I end up saying, "I wish I had said something." So, that's how I felt after the last, last version of, of taking a look at this project. And now I have a chance to say something. I recall when you first came forward, one of the, one of the comments was that it's quite possible, as a matter of fact, may even be expected, that the, some of the clients for the, the doctor would be coming from Atria. And that would be a very logical assumption to make, especially if we're looking at two other perhaps medical or some sort of businesses going in there. In that case, I look at the sidewalk, which ends well before the access road to this property. In other words, if folks are walking from Atria to the property or to the facility, they would have to go out along Black Point Road and then turn into the property or take a car from Atria, because there is really no pedestrian access from Atria to this property. And to me, it makes sense to consider a, some sort of a sidewalk system, perhaps connecting to the sidewalk on Black Point Road, which looks as though it ends just partway in, to allow ease of access for the folks who are at Atria, who might not want to start dodging cars as they walk to their chiropractor. So, I would suggest you take, take a good look at that and ease of pedestrian access.
If I can just comment on that particular item. If you look at that image that's up there, our entrance is coming in at an area where all guests and visitors are actually diverted over here. So, the parking in the main entry for Atria is up here. I haven't studied in particular their network of sidewalks, but I believe that a direct route would be available to come in and connect into the sidewalk that's existing along Black Point Road. And our connection to the chiropractic office is right there. So, we do tie into the public sidewalk along here, and the folks that are up there would be in this area. This is more of a service area. So, trying to direct someone to come along here and then down and in, I think, would actually make a more circuitous route than if we actually got them into the public network and down into our connection there at the building.
Then I would really appreciate it if, at the next appearance to the board, we could really see how that interconnection works. That'd be very helpful.
Yep.
I am not inclined to agree with your request to go to the 53 spaces. I, on the other hand, I'm sympathetic with the need for more, more parking spaces. And as I look at the lot and the schematic here, there are six spaces at the very end of the parking lot at the side that seem to me to be superfluous. If those six are removed, that provides more, less impervious area, and it provides more of an opportunity for some good screening. So, I would encourage you to look at removing those and consider what sort of screening possibilities there would be for the folks down below, not just, not just white pines. I've got several dying on my property. But it's, it provides an opportunity for buffer, buffering. It does provide for some more parking space. But I, at this point, as I said, I'm not inclined to go with the 53. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
I think we've done a pretty decent job of covering stormwater and traffic. Traffic wise, I would like to, you know, there are quite a few units at Eastern Village that are permitted that haven't been built yet. So, that's, of course, going to, I don't know if those are taken into consideration in the study or not, if they need to be, but I know Bill's...
Rick, is that a question you'd like to, to Mr. Bray answer, if possible?
Well, I think we'll be looking, did you take into consideration the Eastern Village?
I did.
Okay. I thought you would. I, knowing you, I thought you would, but I didn't see it in the study.
So, just, just for the record, in case it would be near Mr. Bray, so that they did take the Eastern Village permitted units into consideration.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's good. And then the other thing I mentioned, since we talked about looking at the, potentially looking at that timing and the programming of that light and, of course, how it affects everything else. But I know from having lived on that side of Scarborough, bringing my son to high school in the morning, that a lot of that's 7 o'clock, 7:30 traffic is teenagers and parents bringing their kids to school. So, it tends to back up, like Susan said, all the way back to that bridge in the morning now, which, again, it's not particularly this applicant's problem, but it's, if we keep adding, we go from 83 seconds to 90 seconds, and then what happens? We go to, next building goes in, we go 90 seconds to whatever happens to be. So, anytime you increase the time there, if we could alleviate it in any way, that'd be great. That goes without saying. So, the other thing that, that one of the folks from the Condo Association mentioned that we didn't really talk about was the lighting and their concern with the buffering. So, I just took a quick look at sheet seven of the plans, and it shows your lighting plan. So, currently, your lights are located near the building and facing away from the building. And that's normally the way it's done. But because there are residential structures right behind that back parking lot, I don't know if you'd consider flipping the lights so they're on the other side of the parking lot, using full cutoffs in the back so that there's no light going that way? Think about that? No, maybe?
Yeah. When, when I laid it out, I had considered that.
Yeah.
The only reason they're really on the other side is because that's the snow storage as well. So, I was trying to...
Catch 22.
Yeah.
If you could maybe put them on a, you know, there, there are poles and structures that you could, I understand your dilemma, but you could put it on a concrete pole, for example, and lifted it up. I know there's some aesthetics involved in that, but you'd keep the snow away from the pole, and it would help the condo association from getting that backlight.
And there's some logistics to keep them, you know, not having to run a conduit to the other side, but that can be overcome as well.
Yeah.
That was the reasoning.
All right. Well, if you, how about, have you thought about, is there any reason that these lights can't be dimmed after closing?
Not going to be able to.
You know, it's not a high-crime area. It's okay, police stations, don't throw those away. I mean, you could dim them right down to nothing, right? After closing?
I think we'll, we'll talk about that every resort to that.
Okay.
That should be all.
And then the last thing I'll mention is, I just happened to look at the part number real quick, and you're using 4,000 Kelvin color, which is fairly normal, because it's a nice, white, bright light.
Yeah, I usually like 3-inci ones.
You know, my eyes aren't that good, but the, part of that part number is 40K. And on the Lithonia literature that you gave us, the 40K is 4,000 Kelvin.
I'll double-check that. My intention was to do 3,000, typically my preference.
Yeah. So, so the part number on, like I said, my eyes aren't that great, but the part number...
Negative.
I don't know for sure.
Large print version next time.
Yeah. It's LED P3 40K TFM blah blah blah.
Okay.
And the 40K is 4,000 Kelvin.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I would think about, because it's close to the residential, I'd use the 3,000 Kelvin, a little softer light.
Absolutely.
And you know the whole 4,000 AMA thing, right? 4,000 Kelvin kill, causes cancer. It's one study. Don't shut, don't shut your lights off, okay? Yeah, that's all I have on the, but so, I mean, if you could move the lights to the other side, but I understand you have to run conduits and stuff like that, but I'd use 3,000 Kelvin and dim them, if you can.
Also? Thank you. A lot of good comments and discussion already. I'm going to try not to belabor too much of it. Just starting with the stormwater, I believe a couple of us were on the board when Atria was approved. And I seem to recall that there were a lot of discussions when that was, when that was proposed from various neighbors, not necessarily the same folks, obviously, but from various neighbors talking about already having issues with water in their basements and so forth. And I say that just to say, similar to the traffic issue, that, you know, to an extent anyway, this is kind of a pre-existing condition for some folks. And it's sometimes, particularly as I alluded to earlier, tough to draw a definitive line between cause, between one potential cause and, and the, what people perceive to be the effect. So, in both cases, you know, we always have to, it's always a tension and a challenge for us, because, as others have noted, we can't necessarily just, can't just have the last person through the door pay a disproportionate price or not be able to do what they're, at least theoretically permitted to do under the ordinance, provided they meet certain conditions. So, as Ms. Ogless said, that's why we have traffic impact fees. That's why we have, you know, we have some very rigorous local stormwater standards that, you know, are sort of layered on top of the state's standards. And we're fortunate to have, to have people who are very aggressive about enforcing all that. I would agree with Ms. Saunders that a peer review of HydroCAD does seem to be in order here, given, given some of the questions involved and the location and the context. I would also ask that staff, to the extent that it's feasible, before the next time this applicant comes before us, if they could just, for the record, confirm or other, just generally investigate whether there are, have been any issues, known issues with the Atria stormwater system. Just so that, again, as I alluded to earlier, I think we have to be careful about getting too caught up in kind of anecdotal accounts and people maybe jumping to conclusions or making assumptions about things. And that's not to trivialize any issues that some people may be having, but I just think we have to try to be careful there. In terms of site access, I, you know, to the extent that there is a, a good, quick fix that helps with the traffic light sequencing, as someone who lives at the southern end of Scarborough, I, you know, those 13 lights sometimes seem to always be synchronized against me. And I'm sure all of you have experienced that, so, but as others have noted, it's probably not going to be the magic bullet for, for this specific context, but every little bit helps. We appreciate all the detailed analysis on, on traffic movements and so forth. I don't think anyone, any of my colleagues spoke to the, unless I'm forgetting, the, the notion of adding another flashing light or sign of some sort in that area in addition to what already exists for Eastern Trail. And I know that staff had noted in their comments that there was some concern that there might be kind of signage overload at some point, and it might actually just cause confusion or maybe even cause people to just be numb to it after a while. I don't know that I have a strong opinion about it one way or another. I guess my general feeling is I think it's, it's worthy of additional discussion with town staff as appropriate. I think I personally would like to err on the side of people just having a heightened sense of awareness, and if it's something that slows them down and causes them to pause a little bit, all the better. But I do understand and appreciate the comment about, you know, maybe at some point it being too much. Just want to make sure I'm touching on all the, all the items that were discussed here. I think buffering and landscaping have been pretty well covered. On parking, I also am, am reluctant to approve the 53 spaces. You know, in my experience, and just from being on this board for over 10 years now, with very rare exceptions, I think we end up overbuilding parking. And there, there are notable exceptions, and at least one of which is a recent exception, that is, that is based on a, more of a restaurant use, an intensive restaurant use, certain types of restaurant and retail uses, I, I think can sometimes have extra demand for parking. But I, this also leads to the, the notion of restricting the type of future tenants. And I do support limiting that to medical office or something along those lines, because I think this is definitely not an appropriate location for, for, you know, retail or restaurant or drive-through or anything like that. So, given that, I would just ask that the applicant go back and revisit those parking assumptions. I don't know if there might be an approach where space is reserved for future build-out of parking and whether that, there's some, somehow that that can be wordsmithed into a conditional approval. But I, at the very least, I would ask the applicant to give that some additional thought before come back in front of us. Did you have something to say to that?
Yes, I do.
Nancy?
I wanted to catch you, but I didn't want to interrupt you. The specific reason for the six spaces per thousand is based on an anticipated medical type use. The need for that is being seen in the market because of the changing way that appointments are being scheduled, so that there's an overlap. And so, what happens is the demands for medical office type uses are seeing that need that's more in the six spaces per thousand. So, it's the intent of marketing to a medical office need that drives that. And I know from the applicant's own center itself, his staggered scheduled appointments are such that he needs the, the ratio as well. So, it's not that we're trying to overbuild. It's not that we're trying to do the what-if. It's based on what we are seeing for the targeted tenant that we are looking for in this building. And so, we don't want to build a site that has a parking deficiency and then not be able to get to the tenants that we'd like to see that would complement this type of use.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, I, I have, I think the board has heard similar things from other applicants in the past, and then we end up with a lot of extra impervious surface. I just, would just ask that you give that some additional thought.
Decent.
And we'll see where we land going forward on that. That's my, my personal position on that. Just very quickly, architecture, from what I've seen, looks fine. I, I like the overall design from what I've seen of it, and the, the mix of different materials is appealing. And we will look at that in more detail going forward. But beyond that, I think hopefully the next steps are clear for all involved, and we, thanks again to the public for the comments, both verbal and written. And we will look forward to seeing this next time.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number five, Contour Properties LLC requests a subdivision amendment review for Eight Science Park Assessor's Map R77, Lot 3B. Jay?
We'll let folks clear out here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you noted, this application is on the agenda for a subdivision amendment. The application materials sort of reference the request for site plan and subdivision. And as staff went through the materials, there seemed to be, there was some confusion in trying to draw out what really the request was seeking. And we believe the writ materials are still a bit murky in that regard. Staff has had the benefit of a sit-down meeting with the applicant as well as a couple of phone conversations. So, I feel like we have a pretty good understanding of what's being sought and that there is a fairly straightforward pathway to get there. And so, I think what I'd like to do is, you know, give you the quick zoning context and then really ask the applicant to sort of just walk through sort of what it is they're precisely looking for. Again, if I didn't mention already, this property is in the BOR zone, Business Office Residential, as well as has some shortland overlay district that is also applicable. And so, I think with that, as I said, I'm going to keep my intro fairly short and let the applicant sort of walk the board through what the request is and staff's due to answer questions. questions along the way.
All right, I think that's all we got for now, and turn it over to the applicant.
Great, thanks very much. My name is Mike Tatum O'Wieland. I'm a civil engineer with Teradyne Consultants. I'm here with Bob Gudrow and Bill Beshenstone from Contour Properties. They're the applicant on this. Science Park subdivision is located at the northern end of Route 1 in Scarborough. We were here back in June reviewing a site plan for Lot 2 of that subdivision. Let me take you back a little ways and give you a little of the background on the subdivision itself. So, Science Park subdivision, the original subdivision plan is here in front of you. It's about 17 and 1/4 acres. It was originally approved by the planning board back in 1978, and there are six lots included in that subdivision. This corner lot here, which is, this is the corner of Route 1 and Science Park Road, and this is the existing elevation center today. I believe, was that the Old Conica Building, is that what it's referred to as? So, the Old Conica Building is here, was not part of that original subdivision. So, Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 was the original subdivision. So, back in 1978, the Foundation for Blood Research developed Lot 1, which is here, and within a couple of years had outgrown that building, I believe, and sold it and developed Lot 2 for its facility. So, Lot 2 was the site of the Foundation for Blood Research from about 1980 until, I believe, 2016 or 17. And Lot 1 is the location of existing medical office building today. So, today, what exists is Science Park Road. Lot 1 is developed, Lot 2 is developed, and Lots 3 through 6 have not been developed, so they remain in a forested condition, undeveloped today. Like I mentioned earlier, we were here in June to review site plan amendment for Lot 2, which is the, most recently, the Foundation for Blood Research building. That's been, the site plan amendment was approved back in June for an expansion and a conversion into medical office use. So, what the applicants are seeking from the board now is a subdivision amendment. And like Jay mentioned, we provided a lot of information in the packet, but what we're asking for in the short term is the applicant's looking to create a condominium here, a commercial condominium. Lot 1 is not under control of the applicant, that's owned by others. So, what is proposed is for Lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and Science Park Road to be combined into a single lot, and a commercial condominium will be created. So, I'll change over to the, where is the proposed plan? So, the proposed, the proposed plan includes sort of the shortening of Science Park Road, and this is a, this is a private road today that'll be maintained as a private road, but a shorter, to a shorter extent. And that will continue to provide frontage for Lot 1 of the subdivision, which, again, is owned by others and really needs Science Park Road for frontage, because it does not front on Route 1 itself. Lot 2 has amended site plan approval. This will contain two condominium units, they're labeled Number 2 and 2A. Again, those buildings are existing and have site plan approval. And then in the future, site plan approval will be sought for Units 3, 4, and 5. And we've gone through the process of developing site plans, I'll call them conceptual site plans, but there's quite a bit of work and detail was put into them. We don't have building architecture yet, because the buildings have not been designed, so that's the primary reason we're not seeking site plan approval for those at this point. Lot 3 is, is anticipated to be about a 36,000 square foot medical office use, with associated parking, utility infrastructure, stormwater management, landscaping, et cetera. Unit 4 is anticipated to be about 3,200 square foot general office, and Lot 5, or I'm sorry, Unit 5 of the condo will be approximately 4,500 square feet, again, general office. So, in the short term, sort of, infrastructure improvements will include a sidewalk that'll be constructed along Science Park Road. Currently, there's no sidewalk along the Science Park Road. And utilities, there are existing water and sewer mains in Science Park Road, they currently end at Unit 2, so those will be extended up to Unit 3, and new services will be installed for the Units 4 and 5 in the future. In addition to approvals from this board, the project will also require a traffic movement permit from DOT. That's in process. The scoping meeting has been held, and the report, or the study will be submitted in the coming days, possibly by the end of the week, this week. And eventually, the project will also require a stormwater permit from the DEP. The way we've designed the stormwater management in the plans you have in front of you is a sort of a site-by-site, a site-by-site design. So, for instance, Unit 3 has its own subsurface sand filter. Unit 2 and 2A are, stormwater is collected in an underdrained soil filter, that, again, that's already been reviewed and approved. And then Units 4 and 5 also handle their own stormwater runoff. So, this isn't a case of sort of a traditional subdivision where you're collecting all the stormwater runoff from the entire thing and sending it down to a common wet pond or something like that. So, we're asking that stormwater be reviewed as part of the site plan review on a, sort of a unit-by-unit basis as those designs come forward. And as soon as the threshold for, for the DEP permit is triggered, the project will go to DEP for that permit. So, again, we've thrown a lot at you in the, in the plans that were submitted and in the application materials, and we certainly welcome any feedback you have on the individual site plans. But in the short term, what we're asking for is the subdivision amendment, which would sort of do away with the existing lot lines on Lots 2 through 6, combine them and allow the applicant to condominiumize the different units. So.
Is that a word? More about.
So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have and get any feedback that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd have the opportunity for public comment on this item, if there's anyone. Same rules apply, five minutes or less.
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that while we wait for anyone who may wish to get up, the board did receive a letter prior to the previous meeting that was, you know, in, that is part of the public record, from actually the owner of the one lot of the subdivision, so I just wanted to be sure that that's noted.
Thank you. Thanks for that reminder. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board. Robin, do you want to start this?
Sure. Yeah, I want to limit my comments to stormwater. And first of all, I applaud you for two things. One is your format, I love how you put your peak runoffs. I'm looking at specifically page 6 of your stormwater report. I really appreciate that you put the percent increases and you play things out so practically. The second thing I don't want to commend you for is going on a site-by-site basis. It's, that's really the best, you know, sort of treated at the source instead of conveying it to this, you know, this huge, you know, anyway. The point of my, I guess, putting the two together, though, Mike, I'm just wondering on page 6 of your report, how you got to the 7% increases. Did you do like a weighted average of the percent increase from the entire condo area, or have you done a site-by-site analysis to find out what the amount?
Yeah, so, so we didn't, we did, we treat this as sort of an aggregate site. We look at the entire site. And are you talking about, can you be a little more specific?
Yes. So, when you said, on page 6, when you said your pre-development versus post-development for 6 years, there was a 7% increase, 10 years is 4.7.
Right.
And 25 is a 3% increase. And I'm wondering, is it over the entire parcel and it's not evaluated based on each individual unit?
Correct, yeah. So, our analysis is, was, is, that's a pre-development versus post-development comparison. The pre-development was the condition prior to the revisions to this Unit 2 and 2A area, because there was an increase in impervious area there. So, the pre-development condition was prior to that, and the post-development condition is the full build-out.
And I guess all I'm trying to ask is, have you done any analysis on, for example, Unit 5 and Unit 4, you know, 4, to see what the percent increase is, to see if it's like just one specific unit that's causing the increase?
Understood, and it's, it's not. The answer is not. We did look at that quite a bit, and we feel like we've done.
And Karen has a copy of the report for you, so you can go to page 6.
We did study that. And we, where, you'll remember that there was a small increase in the peak flows as a result of the site plan approval for Units 2 and 2A, which is Lot 2 in the subdivision. And when we went through the analysis for the entire parcel, it became very difficult to sort of overcome that. So, this area, the area of development for Units 3, 4, and 5 today are undeveloped, right? They're wooded. So, there's not a lot of runoff coming off those areas. In the post-development condition, we've provided as much storage as possible, really, to the extent that there's almost nothing coming out of that sand filter in the 25-year storm. And likewise, there's almost nothing contributing to peak flows from these small, sort of relatively small developments for Units 4 and 5. And I get, the study point is the Nonsuch River, which is several hundred feet sort of to the, to the north, I guess. So, really, the increase is coming from, it's coming from Unit 2, Unit 2 and 2A, I believe.
Okay.
And again, we, at the time we designed that, we maximized, we really maximized the volume of storage in that underdrained soil filter to try to reduce the increase as much as possible. And we feel like we've done sort of as much as feasible, given, I guess, a number of factors, including.
Yeah, and you're not in the floodplain zone at all? You're not in the flood zone at all?
No, the flood, the flood zone actually doesn't extend onto this, this site.
It's just so low lying there. It's difficult. All right, I guess I'm, I'm looking at Angela, let me just check with Angela real quick to see if she's on board with this approach to sort of looking at it at a unit-by-unit basis versus an overall, overall net kind of a thing. Are you on board with that, or do you have?
Well, I think the original, when you were here previously with the last project, which is being constructed, we talked about the issues, and we went around and around with stormwater a little bit, and looking at it as we'd have more opportunities, I guess, as we kind of move through in each lot, and I guess a little of both, I think. I think we're going to have to look at each individual, but then also at each point, say, check in kind of where we're at, I guess, if that makes sense?
I would agree with that. I'm not proposing that we, that we, I'm, as we move forward and develop the different units, I still think it's prudent to look, to study the site as one complete site.
Right.
But, you know, say Unit 3 comes along next, I think we'd probably look at that, the design of that system, and what does that do to the stormwater coming off the entire site? So, when I say we look at it on a unit-by-unit basis, I say we sort of, what I'm saying is we analyze what the design of those units is doing to the entire site as we tackle those things.
It's a very challenging site as far as stormwater is concerned, so I appreciate you sort of thinking outside of the box. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, just on that sort of, that theme of, you know, the bigger picture versus site-by-site, this might be a good point to put staff on the spot and see if they could give us a little bit of direction on, or clarification on the threshold, the threshold or thresholds that the board should be focused on, given what specifically is being sought tonight in terms of subdivision amendment approval? Because I think it gets a little confusing in reading through the materials and then also listening, I mean, it's helpful detail, but then there are references to the project, and I think sometime, it's hard to kind of keep focused on what is it that specifically we are being tasked with potentially acting on tonight? I don't know whether we'll get there or not, versus things that are going to be further into the weeds than we're actually doing, looking at site plan approval for specific sites.
Sure. Happy to sort of chime in, and I think, yeah, that's part of the confusion, is what exactly is the ask? Is it, you know, is this the development pattern that we're asking for, and, you know, sort of the build-out scenario that we're planning for? And then the subdivision amendment plan, you know, I guess the easiest way to sort of look at this is really to take this in a very stepped approach, in that a subdivision amendment plan, as it was already noted, if we look at the 1978 approved plan we have, in approved private way with six approved commercial lots, that, but for the fact that they want to turn this into a condominium, a developer will come along, five separate developers will come along and build out the remaining five lots under our site plan review. This current property owner wants to make what I think is actually a fairly simple subdivision amendment. It's really reducing the road, the right-of-way by some couple hundred feet, you know, whatever that number is, and then merging the lots. But ostensibly, it doesn't really change the access pattern into the lot. So, I really think the subdivision amendment is actually, quite frankly, a very simple, maybe two or three plan sheets and a little narrative that clarifies that. And I think where we got confused along the way was trying to articulate then the further development pattern and look at these site plan elements, but not really giving quite all the information, and so to try to parse it all, to pull it all apart was difficult. So, I think there is an opportunity to do a subdivision amendment that's pretty straightforward. As I said, you know, project narrative, a couple of sheets, the old plan, the proposed plan, and that can be sort of the end of the subdivision amendment process. Then, we will get into, you know, we talked about a sketch plan. Eventually, you know, we're going to need to take a look at access off of Route 1. I think we talked about the left-hand turn pocket. We know that was an issue when Conica came along, the redevelopment, which the developer was part of, that, you know, that left-hand turn pocket is something that's really going to need to get vetted and ironed out. And I think that's, again, where the developer And I think that's, again, where the developer was doing a good job and trying to say, well, here, here is my vision for the future. Here will be my impact. So in a lot of ways, being helpful and informative, but then at the same time, making it just too, too confusing. So in terms of what's being sought tonight, I think if the board really just thinks about this in terms of merging five lots and the reduction of a couple hundred feet of that private way, you know, giving some general guidance around is that, because I should mention, basically what that will, this will become is a unified development. In our, in our ordinance, we have a defined item called the Unified Development and that's what this will simply become. And I think we, you know, staff can work with the applicant's engineer on what those plan notes and plan modifications would look like and could come forward with a, as I said, that simplified subdivision amendment plan. And then if there are any subsequent site plan amendments or site plans that they want to do at the outset, that could be a separate and distinct application, that's its own packet of materials. And so then we work our way sequentially through. So, I hope that helps somewhat.
Response. I really like that idea. It's much simpler. I stopped reading it. I simply couldn't follow it. So I think that's a brilliant idea. The only question I have is things such as landscaping, okay? Is landscaping that's going to be affecting the whole site as opposed to landscaping that's going to affect individual sites? There's a waving up and hand.
Can you speak to this?
I don't know. You're in charge of who speaks when.
Go, come on up.
This is Bob Gudrow, one of the owners of Contour Properties and that's working on the development. This is my fourth condominium of a commercial space. And what we've come to find is that we've put the master plan together so everybody knows where we're going. The road, utilities, all that are in and approved. And then we move on to getting individual approvals per lot, come back with individual landscape plans per lot so that everything gets reviewed downline. But I can go out to my market now and advertise that this lot, or lot three, is available and it can fit a 36,000 square foot building. It may not be the shape and size that you see on the plan today. We've set aside 36,000, but let's say they come not as a medical user, but as an office user. They still could have 36,000. It might be spread out a little bit. But they have to come in and still meet all the current demands of this, this zoning and planning. So it's a master plan that I can move forward with at this point. And that, I think Jay gave it to you as, there's a big picture, but there will become minor pictures as we move forward.
Thank you.
It didn't answer my question, but I've decided that by the time, it's important to ask the question. We'll have some answers. Don't worry about it. Thank you.
So, so I do think, though, that does raise a question in staff's, you know, because recognizing where the developer wants to go with that response is to have sort of pre-marketable lots of, say, 36,000 square. That's where then getting into the traffic analysis, I think, is important at the outset. And that's the bit of information that we haven't been provided yet. So if that's, so I think we can get, if, if they want to make this subdivision amendment process sort of to that level, we can certainly get there, but then there's more information that's going to be needed to be found. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have, we had a meeting with the DOT. It's been many months at this point, but I feel, I seem to recall that with this project and mine others. But, um, so, you know, again, I think staff can work with the applicant and their engineer and sort of figure out what it is that we want to get to, what are those pertinent pieces of information, right? Landscaping along the right-of-way might be one thing, landscaping within the lots, probably not needed at this point, so.
All right, thank you.
So, Jay, just a quick question. So all we're talking about tonight is allowing Contour to merge all those lots into one, right? That's all, that's all they're asking for tonight is can they make five lots into one?
I think it would be staff's recommendation that it's a bit unclear of what the exact ask is and that there be a...
Lot and come back.
A, a repackaging of the materials. Because if they are just looking to merge the lots, that would be one thing, but we don't have a plan that then... So there's going to be, there's going to need to be revisions to the plan no matter what happens, so we might as well get that done. And I think we can come back to the board for potential subdivision amendment. That's a one needing item. But again, it depends on the level of complexity that we're trying to get to. And I think that's where the...
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't the only one that didn't know what he was doing, what he was being asked to do.
Yeah, and if I may, so what's shown on the plans in front of you is, is essentially what the applicants want to build out. And frankly, if we had architecture for these buildings or if architecture wasn't part of the review, we would be seeking site plan approval for the entire thing. And should someone come along and want to, want to change something, we would be seeking an amendment, a site plan amendment at that point. That would have been the approach we would have liked to uptake, but it became, staff made it pretty clear that without architecture, site plan approval for any or all of the proposed units is off the table. So that, that's why you have in front of you sort of the wealth of information that, that would lead you towards the site plan review. That said, where the applicant, as you heard from the applicant, they do sort of see this level of development and this is what they want, would like to go to the market and advertise. So the traffic, the, the traffic process, the process with, with DOT is in process. There was a scoping meeting held. Bill Bray is the consultant working on that and we expect that to go to DOT, his report to go to DOT in the, in the next week or so. So we do expect to come back and have that. And tonight, frankly, we're not asking tonight to just merge lots. I, I think there is, there is a next step to that and we, we certainly will provide some clarification on that in the form of maybe a simplified plan set in a, in a more clear cover letter like Jay mentioned. The other thing that, that we'll be providing is some draft condominium documents that are going to largely mimic the, the plan that's in front of you. So we'll talk about sort of the five, five proposed condominium units and what their responsibilities are with maintenance and limited elements and common elements and so on and so forth. So again, any feedback the board has on that tonight, we're welcome to take that and, and use that in, in the next, sort of that next step. And then I think when someone, when, when someone comes along and wants to develop one of these units and we have an actual building, an actual building architecture, then we'll be coming back for review of the site plan elements for each individual unit. So sorry to confuse the process here.
I think if nothing else, we got, I think we've kind of gotten our heads around the ask a little better and kind of play everyone on both sides, has a better understanding of what needs to happen next.
Great.
Given that, are there other comments or questions in terms of direction or feedback to the applicant? Rachel?
I'd just like to compliment you for approaching the Scavo Land Trust with those wetlands. Really appreciate that, given their closeness to the Nunsuck.
Yeah, I think it's, it would be natural for them to, to take ownership of that and protect it. And the applicants, they continue to be in discussion with them, so hopefully, hopefully the, the land trust will accept it.
Anything else? Okay. With that, we will see you next time. Thank you. All right, I'm going to propose that we take a very brief break, like two, three minutes, and then we'll come back and try to power through the last couple items on this agenda.
You'll get a new...
Thank you.
Just before I use my microphone.
Sorry, excuse me, we're, we're, we're getting started, folks. Thank you. Thank you. Number six on the agenda, Five Stars Holdings LLC requests a subdivision review for a conservation subdivision at 48 Mitchell Hill Road, assessor's map, R10, lot five. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is for a residential subdivision in the RF or Rural Farming District. And it does meet the standards for a required conservation subdivision in that it has more than an acre of wetlands on the site. Therefore, the applicant, as I just noted, is required to go through those conservation subdivision design standards, which ostensibly require, it's a density-neutral approach to development pattern in that the typical number of lots that would be typically allowed in the RF district at 80,000 square feet and 200 feet of frontage are still allowed. However, the lot sizes are allowed to be reduced in consideration of at least 50% of the land being maintained as open space and the preservation of wetlands and water courses is really the predominant element that's sought. So with that, you will have received host of staff comments, well, actually just comments from staff as well as from our traffic peer reviewer. One of the items that we noted and had a discussion around was the amount of disturbed area associated with the project. The applicant had previously noted, or in their submissions noted, that there was going to be less than an acre of disturbance. In subsequent discussions that we've had, they are, I think they've sort of looked at it, reconsidered and note that there will be greater than an acre of total disturbance. Therefore, that triggers a sort of separate or a higher level of subject, stormwater review. They sort of have to meet controls in terms of chapter 500, DEP chapter 500. So that'll be elements that will need to come forward as the plans progress. We'll note that this was before you for a sketch plan back in October. At that time, the board had indicated that a wetland peer review would be a good idea and so that was accomplished. The Cumberland County, folks from Cumberland County Soil Water Conservation District did that for us. Neil should have received those comments as well. So then just going through our staff comments, a couple of things we noted are just ensuring that, you know, there's adequacy of setbacks from the, the wetlands and the onsite streams, discussion about the future ownership of the open space, as well as consideration for access management, potential for shared driveways and ensuring that there's adequacy of site distances. I think those were the main elements that we want to touch on. Did I miss anything?
I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jay.
And at this point, I'd like to recuse myself from the proceedings, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to the applicant representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bill Thompson, project manager with BH2M Engineers. Jay gave an introduction indicating we're, we're here for Five Star Holdings. The developer for a nine-lot subdivision, Mitchell Hill Estates, excuse me, it's on 28 and a half acres in the RF zone as shown on the highlighted drawing. It is a conservation subdivision, which is what we've reflected here. We've done the net residential calculations. The drawing at the lower end of the easel reflects what a nine-lot subdivision would look like as a conventional project to show that a, a nine-lot conventional project would work on the 28 acres. Our net residential tax, again, just, just slightly... Our net residential tax, again, just slightly exceed the nine lots in the nine of what we are proposing. There is one existing house on, which is on Lot 6, on the frontage of Mitchell Hill Road, that will be obviously part of the subdivision. We've divided this out. The minimum lot size, 30,000 square feet, they all exceed that. We have frontages anywhere from 102 feet to 140 on the nine lots. All the lots will have their own septic and well. We've completed two test pits on each lot, as was required and is shown on this drawing. Open space for conservation subdivision, you have to have at least 50% of the project set aside as open space. We have 19.5 acres, which is just under 69%, so we've exceeded that. And we feel the project fits in, works nicely with that open space. We had the wetlands completed, which are highlighted in a little bit of a darker green in the center, and the peer review came back with a couple of tweaks, but nothing significant, and this plan does reflect the peer review wetlands. The site also has, at the very northern end here, there's a perennial stream, which we've shown, and we've shown 75-foot setback from that, and it does not impact Lot 9's billable area at all. Also came back on the peer review of a couple of intermittent streams. They're not shown on your submission, but we did locate them, and there's three of them, just on this north or northwesterly boundary. They barely come back onto our site, and that'll be in our next submission. You'll be able to see the impact, or no impact, from our development, but it was asked that we show them and see what impact it might be. We're going to have, obviously, driveways coming out onto Mitchell Hill Road. Kind of, I'd say, the beauty of this piece is site distance is not an issue. Lots 1 and 9, we were asked to review the site distance on those to make sure, and we exceed 360 feet and 350 feet from Lot 1 and 9, which were the two in question, and they exceed the requirement for driveways. Lot 5 and 6 will have a combined driveway. The house on the front, the driveway just tweaks across the corner of Lot 5, so we are going to do a shared driveway for Lot 5 and 6. But the other lots, in our last meeting, we talked about shared driveways, and we said, well, you know, they really don't work well. It becomes issues with your neighbor and plowing. So what we've agreed, and I think the board was looking favorably at that, is each lot a driveway would be developed with a little bit of a turnaround when they come out of the garage, so they, nobody's backing out on Mitchell Hill Road. So everybody can turn around on their property and then come out, and obviously, a lot's safer. But again, the site distances work really well. It is a posted 35 mile an hour zone, so we feel like, well, we do, we've exceeded the requirement that the ordinance has. Jay mentioned a little bit about the stormwater. The site drains from Mitchell Hill Road, everything drains, what, my lighter, everything drains off into the, sort of, westally, southwesterly from Mitchell Hill Road, which is nice because this area helps mitigate any stormwater that might be coming off these sites. But we do want to recognize and try to work with the one acre of total disturbance that doesn't keep you, that keeps you from going into a high level, higher level stormwater. The applicant will not be building any home. They're going to sell lots, so this could have, you know, this one existing house, this could have eight builders in here. So what we'd like to do, and we think we can work with that, is the one acre of disturbance that would be allowed under the lower stormwater level, if you will, is to allocate an equal portion to eight lots. I mean, Lot 6 is developed, there's no more disturbance required. So what we'd like to do is take that 43,560 square feet and allocate it equally to the eight lots. We can put notes on the plan, which is about 5,445 square feet of disturbance. Our homeowner docs, they're going to do a one-level ranch-style home. We're talking about a minimum of 1,300 square feet. So with 55, let's call it 54, 5,500 square feet of disturbance, with a 1,300-square-foot house and the driveway and septic, we feel we can work with it. And what we would do is obviously have notes on the plan, and if a builder came in and had to or needed to exceed that based on site conditions, they would then be required to meet the higher level of stormwater improvements, which might need a drip edge on the home or a buffer. I mean, we've got sort of an ideal situation, if you will, on the backs of these lots, where grades are coming off in this direction, is if we did exceed it, or if one of the builders did, then that could be accomplished. Just going to get down through, we did get a memo from Jamelle's office. These issues, I just want to highlight on them, they're not responded to yet on the plans, but we obviously will. There was an error on the setbacks. We had 10-foot sides to rear setbacks, it should be 15. That's an easy fix. And again, on the, I talked a little bit about the stormwater, but with the grading and the driveways and the houses, we're really going to try to work so that we're not triggered into a higher level stormwater permit. The intermittent streams will be shown on the final plans. The 25-foot setback, we have no wetland impacts, which is nice, kind of unique. And on the backs of these lots here, we do have a 25-foot setback from the wetland, and those can be delineated in the field with pins with a buffer notation on them. Jamelle asked for a date and a drawing of when the wetlands were done and when the peer review was done, which we can do. The wetland consultant for my client obviously did the wetlands and found no characteristics to support vernal pool. It was done in August, obviously, that's not the vernal pool season, but in order to have a concern about vernal pool, you need the characteristics. A vernal pool is a, obviously, it's in a wetland, it's a depressed topography with no inlet and no outlet. So that was reviewed as part of our wetland study. So if we don't have the characteristics for vernal pool, we don't feel like we need to wait until spring to review that, because it was looked at for the potential in August. Open space will be left in its natural state. There will be a homeowners association formed just to manage, should they want to do any walking trails, or if something needed attention, there would be a homeowners association formed. We talked about the shared driveways. 5 and 6 will be the only lot that we're proposing that on. Site distance was measured using the eye height of 3.75 feet coming out of the lot and the object approaching at 4.25, and again, Lot 1 had, Lot 1 had 350, and Lot 9 had 360, which again exceeds the ordinance requirement. There was another detail on the construction plan for inlet protection on the culvert. Each driveway will require a culvert, which will be directed by the public works. Recreation fees will be paid by the individual lot owner, where the applicant is not going to be building. We are going to propose a fire tank for fire protection. We're in talks with the fire department and the proper person that is responsible for that. Again, in Jamelle's memo, it's just all the town standard notes, which obviously can be added to the final plan. And we had a couple of typos on some booking pages, just some minor adjustments on that. So we feel like, you know, we're in good shape here. Like I said, I think it's a project that fits well with what you're looking for for a conservation subdivision. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Good, thank you. First, we do have the opportunity for a public comment. In case anyone wasn't here before, we just asked that anyone who has anything to say, come on up, give your name and address, leave your comments to five minutes or less. Try to avoid being too repetitive with anything that might have been said before, and please direct your comments to the board and not the applicant. So with that, we will open it up.
Good evening. Wallace Fangler, 233 Holmes Road in Scarborough. I owned most of the land around there, so I have an intimate knowledge of it. As far as those streams, I was the one that questioned that, and that resulted in the peer review. And there's one year-round stream with a 36-inch culvert going under Holmes, under Mitchell Hill Road, and three intermittent streams. But down in this right-hand corner, which I believe would be southeast, it doesn't show on that one, but on the map that was submitted, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, their contour lines, there's like six or seven of them very closely spaced together. And I helped Steve Ross place the pin down in the bottom of that ravine, and that is permanent waterway. It's not shown, and I checked with the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District, and she said that she didn't go that far because she thought that the boundary line was over further off of that area. So there, it doesn't make any difference as far as the number of acres of wetland goes, but there is another stream there. So I'd like to comment on a few areas. I kind of thought that everything was bunched together, and then I found out that Timber Sands Drive, that's right across the street from me, has the same standards, and the spacing there is okay. But what's happening is that our water table is dropping, and my well's gone dry several times. The person that lives across the street from me, Roger Hewitt, has had to draw another well. There's people in the neighborhood that have had to draw as much as four or five wells, and there's a difference between Timber Sands Drive, that's all sand over there, and what's over on this side on Mitchell Hill Road is not the same material. So you might think that, well, with all that wetland, you're going to get more water for your well, but that's not the case. So I'm concerned about the water table and the fact that there is no public water or sewer there. The other, one of the other things I'd like to mention is that the applicant is stating that all the water drains off towards the back, towards the wetland, and if you look at the map, I think you've got this map, the contour lines coming down Mitchell Hill Road, a lot of them are facing towards Mitchell Hill Road. If you look at Lot 1, there's contour lines that face towards the road. When you get to Lot 2, it's not quite so bad. When you get to Lot 3, there's one spacing the road. So you're going to get some runoff from those lots onto the road. And if you look at the contour lines going down Mitchell Hill Road, you'll see that they're closely spaced together because there's quite a hill going down there. And on the other side of that hill, towards Holmes Road, the water actually goes out onto the road and has washed away part of the shoulder down where Steve Peters lives. And in the wintertime, that water that's going on the road freezes. So it will be very important to have adequate ditching along the road to prevent that from happening. I want to just check one more thing. I looked at the letter from VHB, and that letter stated that there were seven residential lots and that there were no streams, and yet we found five streams. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Fangler, and I live at 6 Mitchell Hill Road in Scarborough, and I'm one of the abutters to this project. I have a few comments. I do recognize the sort of recommended build-out with not being a conserve or open space development, and I do see that, you know, we, the applicant has tried to match that in his desires to, you know, develop nine lots. The concern I have is supposed, would be that, I do feel that we're going to try to, that it is, while we're trying to protect the open space, the proposed development or nine lots does sort of not, is not quite in sync with the rural character of Mitchell Hill Road and the abutters on Fangler and Freedom Road. And I do recognize that there's certainly a balance to be struck between open space and a compact development. But if you look at, most of these neighbors, you know, have 200-foot lots, or 200 feet of frontage or more, and, you know, this definitely does seem to be compressed quite a bit. I do have a little intimate knowledge of the area myself, having grown up and worked, working in this area, both comments on site lines and comments on water availability. I don't believe that it's featured on this diagram, but I, one of my current plowing customers, I believe, would be a neighbor to Michael and Lynn Mulcurran. I plow for a former employee, Cody Powers, so I think is an abut or next door to that. And I pull in and back out onto Mitchell Hill Road, and there is, as my father alluded to, you know, there's quite a drop that comes down from the top of, where Fangler Road comes out onto Mitchell Hill Road before you hit this dip and gully, and then head back up to the top of Mitchell Hill Road. And I do worry myself, and I back out onto Mitchell Hill Road of getting clipped by someone descending rapidly from either direction. So I do think that it would be important that we see that these people, if the future build-out is these nine, you know, consolidated lots with small frontages on Mitchell Hill Road, that we do see that they do have turnarounds in their driveway and are allowed to enter onto that road in a forward-facing position. I think that's for their safety as well as those who are traveling on Mitchell Hill Road, and I'm not sure how you would, you know, build that into the requirements of the individual builders that would then develop these homes. One of the other things that was mentioned by my father was about water concerns. I have worked for a number of homeowners in, I believe it's Mitchell Hill Heights, which is comprised of Fangler Road and Freedom Road, and I have, which are, you know, further removed from these properties, but I have had a client, Ryan and his, Miles and his wife, who are, have drilled two wells, are in the process of considering drilling a third well in order to get the water they need for their household needs. Another person just down the road from Peter Ham, oh, excuse me, closer to Holmes Road, Tammy and Troy Locke are in the process of building a home, and in doing so, they had to drill a well so deep that they ended up hitting saltwater and are now having to deal with an expensive treatment system. This summer, I helped a family on Peregrine Way at the top of Mitchell Hill Road to install a lawn, and also I helped with the installation of an irrigation system there. And while that may not be our most pressing needs, is irrigating our lawns as much as, you know, flushing toilets, taking showers and drinking, we tried to do so only to help them get a lawn established, but we took the maximum amount of time allotted in a 24-hour period and stretched out their watering needs throughout the day with, you know, short durations, built-in breaks for the well to develop, I mean, you know, to recharge, and I did the maximum amount, and we still bottomed out and could not keep their water supply. And this is using, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, the most, you know, nozzles that only use a gallon and a half per minute, you know, most of the gallon, toilets that we flush with, you know, use two or three gallons. Showerheads most likely consume more than a gallon and a half per minute. Granted, you know, we're not taking showers all day long, but these folks were, you know, very concerned about whether they were going to have to drill another well. So burdening the aquifer with nine homes does put an additional strain, not only for those individual homeowners, but certainly their neighbors and their abutters. And I do want And I do wonder if perhaps, you know, a smaller, reduced number of lots and a reduced number of homes might be more prudent. Being a landscaper, I'm keenly aware of square footages, installing lawns, sodding lawns, seeding lawns. If the, the developers of this property are, are looking at parsing out 45,000 square feet, so that individual builders of lots 1 through 9 have 5,000 square feet of land to deal with for disturbance purposes, now that's a pretty small lawn by itself. And that 5,000 square feet is going to also include a driveway, a septic system, and the actual footprint of the building itself. I find that very, you know, not convinced that that's possible, to be honest with you. I mean, I installed paver driveways in Portland, and those are pretty small driveways. Six or 800 square feet is a tiny, tiny driveway. So, you know, that's, you know, these are, these driveways, what we imagine would be 1,000 square feet, you know, 1,200, 1,500 square feet just in driveways alone. And then, of course, like I said, the footprint of the home, whatever lawn area, septic system, so on. So I think that's something that's definitely, is something to be looked at. And again, if we shift the focus on to the individual builders to monitor that 5,000 square feet and we've done, done the appropriate evaluation of stormwater on the bigger scale, you know, will we be policing there on the smaller scale later on? You know, that's just a question I have. So I think I've covered it in general. I do have some general concerns about water availability, you know, impact of 5,000 square feet or less, driveway access, the site lines. I will note the existing home, so directly north of that, lots 7 and 8, and potentially into parts of Lot 9, that land had been filled, I can't put a timeline on it, but certainly within my lifetime and within my memory. So I would say somewhere in the last 10 to 15 years, maybe, maybe 15 to 20 years. But I don't know what impact that has and whether the builders of those lots would have knowledge of that or not. But I believe that was brought, clay was brought in to raise that land and level it out so that it could become a meadow, which was in the description that I read. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's David Hamilton. I'm a current homeowner to 40 Mitchell Hill Road, which abuts Lot Number 1. Apparently my issues were the water table, drilling so many wells close together. I know the well that I have is a buried well, which is very deep. So once you start drilling all these wells that are probably deeper than mine, probably going to have some problems with my water. My house was built in the 50s, so I believe I do have a ceramic sewer pipe to my septic, which is probably about 30 feet from the property line. I don't know if there's going to be any major disturbances with blasting or any ledge issues or anything like that. The other concern would be, all the mailboxes currently are on the right side of the road. I don't know if they're going to do that. And also the numbering of the houses are kind of screwed up at the moment. So if you stop jamming seven houses in a quarter mile, I mean, it's going to, I mean, I get the neighbors' mail all the time, so I just want to make sure something like that would be addressed. Just water table would be a major concern, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah May. I live at 57 Mitchell Hill Road, which is directly across from, I believe, Lots 7, 8, and 9. We've lived on Mitchell Hill Road for over 30 years. And one of the things that attracted us to that area of Scarborough was the rural nature of it and homes that weren't right on top of each other, that there was plenty of space around each home, giving a sense of privacy and quiet, which we really appreciate. So my big concern about this development is it feels very out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. So many homes compressed into so few lots. I think it's a great idea, and it could be a good development somewhere else, but it just doesn't seem to fit with the nature and the character of the road that we love and have lived for so long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Ken Simon, 7 Fangler Road, excuse me. My, my lot is the one on Fangler, which is right at the apex of where you see the extension of Lot 6 land is. And I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but I do want to echo the issues concerning the consolidation, the compression of these lots into a larger area. And it does not conform with the nature of the, the surrounding areas. I do appreciate the open space concept. My concern there is future use of that. There is a existing trail system that extends through that area. I use it all the time. And I'm wondering if there's any requirement for them to preserve that, not necessarily maintain it, but preserve those trails that are currently there and existing and are used by a number of people for activities, snowshoeing, skiing, snowmobiling, et cetera. And lastly, I just want to echo Mr. Fangler Senior's comments about the Little River, that stream in the, the lower left corner. That does travel right underneath my driveway, and I can assure you that it flows all year round. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Susan, you have to go first?
Hello. Getting late for the old lady.
That's why I'm letting you go first.
I think that this is, as, as, as the folks who spoke have said, and it's, it's an example of why it's important that people come to these meetings, because you look at a piece of paper and you don't know. You know, all you know is a little line, a piece of paper. And people come in and say things like, we got a problem with the water table, you know, water table issues, really. I think that the impact on the aquifer is something that if we can, as a town, take a look at, and we're concerned about healthy aquifers. We do all kinds of things to protect aquifers. So I would recommend that staff make a real effort to work with the applicant to find out just what is happening to the aquifer up there and what will the impact of these new nine lots have on that. I find it interesting that the, the lots need to have turnaround room because we really don't want anybody, I live on Black Point Road, you don't back out on the Black Point Road. You also don't back out onto Mitchell Hill Road. So there needs, you know, I mean, that seems to me to be sort of a duff factor. The trail system, I know, you can't judge at this time of the night whether or not what I'm saying makes sense. The trail system, we preserve versus maintain, you know, two very different words. It will be preserved because it won't be allowed to be developed, but there won't, the applicant is not required to maintain it. But I think it's something that the Neighborhood Association, because there will be one, can be approached and talk about how, how can that happen? And then there's the thing that we can't probably do anything about, but I want, I want the, people who are here to understand that I fully understand the frustration of wanting to live in the country and then have this happen. When I was a kid, I made snow angels in the middle of Black Point Road. No joke. How do you think I feel now? It's a little discouraging. And this is discouraging, but it's like you take from one hand and you take from the other hand, and we want to preserve wetlands, and this is how we do it, by giving people a bonus, a density bonus type thing. And I don't have an easy answer to that. I, I just want you to know that I really feel badly that that is an offshoot of something that we tried to do to benefit the town. And it probably did benefit the town, but it's not going to benefit the people who are closest to it if they, if they move there in order for it to be quiet and open. I'm very concerned about, oh, a question. I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer, but a question. Why do we have shared driveway on Number 6? I don't understand. Why do we have a shared driveway there?
I think it was a function of the way that the lots sort of angle at each other.
The existing driveway does cross the corner of Lot 5, so we said, well, rather build another driveway five feet away from that one, we use the same entrance and then branch off once we get into the lot.
Okay.
Trying to bring it right in.
And then I'm very concerned that we do, if this actually goes ahead, that the 25-foot setback to the no disturbed area, how you delineate that is something that we struggle with all the time here on the board. You know, I mean, people are going to walk back there, especially since these are individual homes built by individual builders. Is there going to be an association? If it isn't going to be an association, what do we do about delineating? If you have an association and one person goes out and starts to cut down trees, other people who are members of the association notice that and it gets taken care of.
There will be a homeowners association.
There will be a homeowners association? Okay. Make sure that's in the, in the notes. So I have mixed, I have mixed feelings. As I've been known to say many times, so why not say it again? All the good stuff is gone. All the easy stuff is gone. We are now left with very complicated, complex pieces of, of property. And this is a classic example of getting caught between the devil and the deep blue sea. And I think it's wonderful that we're saving this property, but I really don't like this row of houses on Mitchell Hill Road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger?
Okay. This is kind, this is kind of interesting, a lack of water, because almost everything else around Scarborough has too much water. Were you aware of the, the problems with the neighboring wells?
No, none whatsoever. As I said, there's an existing house on this property, which we'll inquire through my applicant, through my client, are there any issues with that well and with the, with the system there? We're not aware of, of any, any problems.
Have, is staff aware of any problems up there?
Not until this evening.
Yeah?
Not until this evening. Thank you for coming.
So we have a potential desert out there, right?
What's that?
We have a potential desert out there. Was, was there any consideration in fewer house lots than what you have right there?
Well, the density supports nine, so the conventional plan on the bottom is how this site could be developed with 80,000 square foot lots. This here is the whole purpose or one of the main purposes of Conservation Subdivision is the preservation. Now, that area in green, 19 and a half acres, it's not all wetland. There's a lot of upland, darker green is wetland. So the density would support nine and a half. The last concept we came in with, we thought 10 lots could be supported. And once we did all of our studies, it came down to nine. So there are eight new lots with one of these lots.
But I understand the density and everything you're trying to accomplish.
Yep.
But instead of nine lots, could you do eight lots?
Just, just to try and put it in more of the character of that whole area. I'd have to consult with my client.
Yeah.
No, I'll take that, that down as a note. I guess I don't have anything else.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I'd like to echo Susan's sentiments here. Now, I live in the city of Scarborough because of the rural character of it all. And, you know, sitting on the planning board, you kind of get to see a lot of things and learn a lot of things. And one of those things is that if you don't have a provision that allows you to do this type of development, then you do risk losing an entire swath of land to develop. And it is a trade-off. And it's, it's a tough balance, and it's tough to sit here and see that. So I certainly feel for all the people that have been speaking here this evening. You know, as far as what I'm looking at, though, from an ordinance standpoint, what we're supposed to be doing here tonight, I only have one question and just more of curiosity. The, you know, line of open space behind lots 5 to 1, 1 to 5, why is there just a, it seems like a just, what was the reasoning behind that 15, I'm going to assume 15-foot?
I believe that's 25-foot strip. I, I think the ordinance says all lots must abide open space. And we wanted to put a bigger piece of land with the existing house, so I put a open space strip, if you will, around that to, to make it contiguous.
Let me see. And the current owner of Lot 6 is staying?
I, I don't know that answer.
Okay. It just, let's see more kind of a, I see you've complied with the, the letter of the ordinance by creating that connection to open space. I'm just wondering if there may be a more practical way to make that viable.
Maybe if it creates a trail, you know, they could, they could develop a, a trail through that strip.
Okay. Outside of that, I don't have a whole lot to add to what I'm seeing here. I would be curious to see what's going on with the water cables there. That's about it for right now.
Thanks, Nick. Rachel?
Yeah, I'm looking at Lot 6 with 133,000 square feet and wondering if that can be reimagined, I guess, or take another look at that as a possibility for making that actually a separate lot, that in back with a longer driveway access to it and giving then lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 at least a little more space so that there's just less of a lineup. And I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's possible, but that's buildable land, it's part of a lot.
Correct.
Currently. The addition of that might eliminate that kind of almost deadly row of houses, one right after the other, only 100 feet in between them. And it might provide a possibility to still have nine lots if that's something that's necessary for the business plan of, of the owner, if that's, if that's what the owner needs to have.
I can address that.
That, that becomes, that becomes a possibility. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the problem with water out there. And if other wells are going dry in the area, I think it serves nobody any good to build a bunch of houses that all of a sudden have to build second wells.
Exactly.
So I do think you need to take a much closer look at the, the water out there. And alternatively to rejiggering Lot 6, again, I think you should take a look at the, the shared driveways. So again, that there's at least a longer space in between, in between these houses. That would allow it to seem a little more in keeping with the rural nature.
We'll consider that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Rip?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it meets, it meets the criteria for a Conservation Subdivision. I understand the public's feeling. I would feel the same way probably if I lived across the street. Like Susan said, I don't know what to do about that. It's, it's not in the aquifer overlay zone, right? This isn't, this is not an aquifer overlay zone, this is just.
No. I believe we looked at that issue and it is not.
Yeah, there, I, I don't know if, I don't know if it's beyond the board to require some sort of study to make, to try to determine where the water table is out there. I don't even know if that's possible, but.
We're going to review the existing well, which we have on, on Lot 6, so we can see what the conditions are and the depth is.
Yeah.
See if I can come back with that data.
So I'll just note that one of the standards said there is a demonstration of adequacy of potable water. So, you know, what that looks like, that, we'll have to talk about that. I think that's obviously an issue that's staffed and the applicant's engineer will need, can sort of work through. Provide, at least provide the information that the board can then make your determination from.
Right. I mean, technically it's fine, and I don't always see a lot of issues. That 30,000 square foot lot, it's going to be open space. I can't see anything wrong with it.
Thank you.
So just, I want to just pick up briefly on this sort of notion of rural character. And I just echo what a couple of my colleagues have said, that it is, you know, it's a tough dilemma. The reality is that there, as the applicant pointed out, you know, there's a lot of buildable land there regardless. That could be built out just as of right. And I think we've all been there at one point or another. You know, you can, it's all a matter of public record, and you can see how everything is owned and what's buildable and who owns it. And that doesn't make it any easier when someone moves in and decides to exercise their property rights. But that is the reality. And as Ms. Ogles pointed out, you know, on top of that, we have this conservation subdivision, which has some trade-offs, which I think overall is for the greater good. And we thread the needle on that. It's a burden on all of us involved, but I think overall it's worked pretty well. So given that, you know, I think in terms of the big picture, I don't see any major concerns. I, well, aside from the potential issue of water table, which clearly needs to be explored. We've already got driveway turnarounds sort of built into the lot plans. The level may be in the details on those as with many things. I guess in terms of process here, Jay, if I can turn to you, it seemed to me that there was, and maybe I didn't follow this correctly, that the applicant didn't necessarily agree that they were disturbing more than an acre. Is that something that needs to be explored further with staff? And I'm thinking, I'm talking about it right now. At the very least, it's kind of a threshold question of whether we're in a position to consider preliminary subdivision approval or whether the, you know, the aquifer question plays into that or not at this stage.
Yep, so, yeah, the acre of disturbance area was a question that staff posed to the applicant upon receiving their initial submission. Board members may note that this, there was a submission that we found incomplete. And sort of as part of that due diligence, that was one of the questions we had asked. So in their most recent submission, the narrative that we received and that we reviewed and the board has reviewed said that they wouldn't be disturbing an acre. Subsequent to staff comments going out, it was either Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, I think it was, Jamel had a follow-up conversation. Maybe it was Mr. Thompson or someone else from his office that.
Might have been the applicant.
Could have been the, either way, someone from the team suggesting that, yes, we will ultimately disturb more than an acre. And as I sort of noted at the outset, that then sets forth the requirement for a higher level of stormwater review to ensure that we're meeting Chapter 500 standards, sort of DEP standards. And frankly, we've seen applications similar to this where, you know, it's, you know, because it's a linear project, maybe that's just the application of undisturbed buffer areas. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to see a big pond or sort of what we might typically see in a parking lot type situation, you know. But again, those are sort of details to be vetted. So I do think that is sort of a threshold question to meeting sort of, does the, has the applicant sort of met the stormwater question? We don't have the answer to that at this point. Can they probably get there? It seems like there's a viable solution out there, but we don't know the answer to that. And then I guess the question to the board would be, are you satisfied that there is adequate capacity in terms of water service out here? And so I think those would really be the two threshold questions for the board to consider in terms of any potential preliminary action tonight.
Given that, and I am trying to be mindful of the time because I know we've got one more item to get to tonight. We're nearing our cutoff point, and I want to be sensitive to that without giving short trip to the current applicant. Given that, it seems to me, and I'm just looking for head nods, that there is a question about adequacy of water. And then the broader question of the disturbed area. So I, given that, and the water availability seems to me to be the most, you know, the brightest line. It seems to me that there's some more work to be done here before we take any formal action.
I didn't realize we were thinking about formal action.
Well, it would just be preliminary subdivision approval. I say just, but that would be a, that would be an actual motion.
Just further, I do have a little bit of concern about the one acre where disturbance spread over nine lots. But I think that's pushing reasonable limit, especially if you're talking turnarounds and driveways, the square footage you'll accumulate in driveways along a house. I mean, I believe one of the people, so we've got to speak. It's close. If staff wants to accept that it's a planned note and they're going to keep track of every square foot that's touched out there, well, I guess that's fine. But I'm not 100% comfortable with the plan.
I tend, I'm inclined to agree with that as well. Seems like there's general agreement. So that will be to be continued. I do want to add, I personally, and I didn't hear anyone else speak to this specifically, I personally would like to see a burnout pool assessment done in the spring, particularly since there's other exploration that needs to be done anyway. And obviously, we've got some other planning cleanup to do to make sure that we show the stream and so forth. So beyond that, does the applicant need anything else from us at this point?
No, I just, on the stormwater thing, it's a little unique in the sense we're going to be selling eight lots. And we don't know what they're going to build. So to try to come forward with a stormwater solution, we don't know if there's going to be a problem.
That, it sort of cuts both ways because it's an issue for us in the same time that we don't know what's going to be built.
I understand.
So to be so close to that threshold.
It seems to me it has to be tied to a building permit and a site design for each lot. So it can be managed by somebody. In this case, the Enforcement and Engineering Department.
So, and maybe Angela, I don't know if you want to chime in, but I mean, to the applicant's sort of point on that, the board has recently done conditions that sort of require particular site grading as part of a planning building permit application. But I don't know, Angela, if you want to sort of touch on what those expectations might be? Or I don't know if you want that sort of level of discussion at this point.
I think it's more about how close they're, I mean, can you actually fit a typical house, a typical driveway, a typical lawn, septic wells? And we've run into that in the past. And also that they have more areas that could clear, like their lawn gets bigger than what they would anticipate. If they're that close, you know it's probably going to get pushed beyond that. So I think it's.
Well, and I guess that, and I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. You know, again, based on the conversation that Jamel had earlier in the week, they recognize they're going to go over the acre threshold. They've said they've gone back and looked at it and said, yes, we're going over the acre threshold. So now I think the question is, and that was, I think, Mr. Thompson's point is sort of, how do you do that as part of a subdivision process? And I think that's where staff is certainly willing to sit down and have those conversations about what that looks like and preparing a plan to address that issue.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to keep moving. Item number seven, Rosewood Land Development, Inc., requests a subdivision review for Tucker Brook subdivision, Payne Road, MAP R49, Lot Two. Jamel?
All right.
Come on.
First stab at it. I know it's late, but I'll try and make this quick. So as Jay noted before, this is a conservation subdivision. It's the same rules, so percent are more open space and intended to protect the town's natural resources and waterways. And we'll note that it's in the R2 zoning difference. So the applicant came in front of the board in November 2017 for sketch plan. And it was, one of the main points of discussion was it's, the parcel is not served by public sewer. So the board was charged with deciding if it was a reasonable request to ask the developer to connect to the public sewer line. So the board should be sure to consider this again during this formal preliminary plan. I believe the distance was approximately 3,000 feet to the public sewer along Payne Road, but I think the applicant can talk about that a little further in his presentation. Other issues are specific lot design and configuration. The parcel is located in the Beaverbrook watershed, which is listed in the state's threatened stream list, so it's important to consider. And then finally, the open space and future ownership. Staff has had initial conversations with the Scarborough Land Trust about the project, the open space parcel. And the Land Trust did indicate that they were potentially interested in the parcel, so the applicant may want to chat with them about that in the future. And now I'll turn it over to Angela for other issues.
I guess I just wanted to highlight the Conservation Subdivision. Obviously, as Jamel said, it's about really avoidance of the wetlands. And so where they're showing less than 10,000 square feet of impact of those wetlands, I think really how this is laid out, there is potential for further impact. And I'll speak to that a little bit, is that the natural topography of this lot and what feeds the wetlands below. And so when you start looking at the alignment of the road and the lots that bisect it, and so really, I guess what I'm hoping for is the board look at maybe, is there potential to do like some overall grading of that so that you can still have some of the runoff from those lots that are being created feed the lower wetlands? And so really what it comes down to is maybe crossing lot eight driveway, for instance, having some of that runoff be able to feed those wetlands below so they're not impacting them, so you're not maybe drying them up or making it less conducive for natural habitat for those lower portions. Specifically too, because it is, as Jamel mentioned on the threatened list, the Beaverbrook watershed. So preserving those wetlands, I think, is really key specifically in this.
And just a final staff note. We did have peer review comments from Woodard and Kern as well as Bill Bray from Traffic Solutions, looking at traffic. And we did receive, and I believe board members also received, a couple of public comment letters. So those were.
Yes, sir.
So I just want to.
Thank you, we do have those.
You'd likely mention that at public comment time, but I just want to mention that as well, so.
Thank you all. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Bray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is that all right?
I hope so.
I think that one is more for, not for our benefit, it's more for the AVs.
Okay, well, good. Can anyone hear me all right? That's all I guess. I just wanted to take a quick walk over here, and just from a presentation standpoint. Again, we were here last November, as you may recall. The plans, obviously, we've tightened them up quite a bit since that time period, but the basics are still pretty much the same. We've got Payne Road right here, Regal Pines Drive across the street over here. We have a proposed roadway that's coming in approximately 900 feet, just over 900 feet in length, culminating in the cul-de-sac. What we're proposing is 14 single-family residential home slots to be serviced by that road. As you may recall, we did have a lot of discussion regarding sewer at that point in time. It is over 3,000 feet away. I have talked to the sanitary district. Again, they have, and actually talked to them again this morning. They have no plans in terms of any future sewer allowed in this area, certainly not in the foreseeable future. Obviously, the topography, if you will, is away from Payne Road. So in terms of putting in a dry sewer, would that be manholes with a gravity system of some sort? That, in this case, would be the exact opposite. We'd be plucking up probably E1 systems, tying into a common force main and pumping back up to Payne Road, assuming if any sewer actually went into Payne Road. So he said, you know, if he, if anything was going to be out there, then probably what he'd ask is for a common force main within the roadway. No services installed or anything along those lines. Again, with the nature of the sewer, I mean, I would just say that, you know, if sewer does come by with Payne Road, if we're going to be putting services in for pumps at that point in time, then probably just running that common force main would be, probably that would be the time to do it rather than up front. I did want to go through some of the comments, and again, I'll try to be brief here. I certainly appreciate the board staying with us here this evening. Again, the sewer, I think we talked a little bit about. In terms of the layout of the lots, of course, we had a lot of things working here, which was the wetland impacts, the setbacks associated with the streams and those types of things, and passing soils. As most of you will know, is, you know, passing soils in the state of Maine is nine inches. It's 15 in the town of Scarborough. So some of the lots have actually, you know, designed, if you will, around what we've proposed septic systems associated with it. Beaverbrook watershed, we do appreciate that. That's why we did have all of the road runoff, if you will, directed towards the pond, a proposed wet pond. From our standpoint, we think wet ponds provide a good level of treatment associated with it. We have seen some issues in regards to the forbey. We weren't overly concerned, if you will, from the impacts, if you will, from this official runoff directed towards the wetlands. It's a good-sized wetland, as you can see. Obviously, there's a lot of water coming down through the eroded stream, if you will, crossing the road within the culvert. And, you know, there's a high groundwater associated with it. I mean, really, a lot of the water that we're talking about is the stuff that percolates down, hits the clay, and then just kind of migrates, if you will, along that clay lens down to the wetland. So in terms of superficially, I did discuss this with our wetland scientist, and he wasn't overly concerned in terms of, you know, surface runoff and associated with the wetland impact. We will need a DEP permit, and actually, I have a meeting arranged for them. The open space, that'd be more than sufficient. What we'd probably do at that point in time would be to break out the stormwater management pond, make that part of the subdivision separately. And if, obviously, if the Land Trust or anyone would be happy to take that land, we'd be more than happy to work with them on that. And my client will have that conversation. In terms of the lot grading, we'd be more than happy. Again, I know the board has had, we're prior part of a building permit. We do a lot grading associated with that for each lot as part of that building permit process. Again, obviously, we don't know exactly where the driveways or the size of the home or the location of the home's going to go. As part of that, as you may recall, we also discussed, could there be any relaxations of those front setbacks? Due to the fact that even though it's not a conservation subdivision, we're still meeting some conservation requirements. Unfortunately, by ordinance, the front setback, it's basically a space and bulk requirement for the B2 zone has to be maintained. As you may recall, we had shown 75-foot setback, serving for the building envelopes from the stream all along the side. I had asked, we've been making a 50-foot no disturb out far from that, 75 feet to the building envelope, 50 feet no disturb. You know, Joe and I discussed it a little bit. Well, you can see some of these building envelopes are real good size, so we're not overly concerned with those. So what we really, you know, would be comfortable, or we'd like to ask the board, is the 75-foot setback from the stream to the foundation, five and seven, a little relaxation to a 50-foot undisturbed buffer for those two lots, and we maintain the 75-foot is undisturbed on all the other lots. So one, two, three, four, five, a lot that has a 75-foot undisturbed buffer from the stream, we would ask for two of the lots to maintain a 50-foot undisturbed buffer, 75-foot setback to the foundation. Obviously, we are meeting the stormwater. The intent of this is to meet the, you know, to get the runoff into the pond and to treat it. I did ask the, about the setbacks, underground cables and the transformer. Of course, all those details, we're more than happy to finalize and work with that. The street trees, however we want to do that. Again, what I typically don't actually show them on the plan because we don't know exactly where the driveways are going to go, but at least agree to what the minimum number would be and the species that everyone would be comfortable with. You know, we have sent everything to the Water District in association with the layout. This will be, have municipal water in it. Will be a roadway with catch basins, a sidewalk on one side. And I think we have a light pole to propose at the hand end. So that's my quick summary, Mr. Chairman. Again, we appreciate the board staying with us this evening. And so on behalf of the ones any questions the board has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we turn to the board, we do have the opportunity for a public comment. Before we turn to the board, we do have the opportunity for a public comment. I think you all know the ground rules by now.
I do know the ground rules.
Thank you.
So, I'm Marilyn Taylor. I live at 168 Payne Road, so this is my home. And there is a creek called Tucker Brook. It's called Tucker Brook Estates. It's badly eroding, partly because there's a culvert that comes right here and cascades water down into Tucker Creek. It's pretty wet, 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 wet. There is a housing development over here, and I think it's the diversion from their runoff, because they're a little higher than we are, that creates the cascade for that culvert. My issues are primarily the same issues you've heard from all except you people all night long. It's traffic and water runoff. 14 sewer systems in that 20-acre parcel that are going downstream and runoff from the roads, and if, I don't know if clearcutting is planned. It's a very heavily forested area or tree area right now. And if a lot of clearcutting was planned, I think that would exacerbate any runoff issues that there might be, and I think those are my primary concerns. And you also have notes about wildlife, and I didn't know, as in a butter, that you guys came and talked in November.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me...
Thank you, and thanks for hanging in there for us.
I'm Ed Bonifant from 6 Colonial Drive. We're abutting on the backside. The lot plan that's up on the screen there is a little bit deceiving, because I think most of the lots on Colonial are double lots. I live on the third house, and I'd be above the fifth on that one. I've looked at this property because it's been for sale for quite some time. The original landowner actually approached me for an easement through our property to access it from Colonial Drive, because looking at this, this is the only logical point out under the pavement, but it happens to be right beyond the crest of the hill. Now, it is a 35 mile an hour speed zone, but traffic is undisturbed from Haggis Parkway all the way over to 1. And police department will probably let you know that most of the traffic is flowing 45, 50 miles an hour. It is not uncommon during storms for that section of the road to be blocked off, because people come over the crest of the hill, and they get an accident, probably enough, and you're going down. And it's not uncommon three or four times a winter for that to occur. The entire lower part of this is all wetlands, active stream, all feeding into the marsh. 14 lots. When I was walking it, I was visioning three houses, maybe shoehorning a fourth in there. But looking at 14, this is extremely, extremely compact. So, hopefully, we are going to get a good environmental impact study for the water quality of the brook, as well as the stream below it and the entire marsh system. I did some internet searching, trying to find this Rosewood Land Development, Inc. The only one I could find was out of Minnesota. Hopefully, we're not selling out to a land developer from Minnesota, but I don't know. That's right.
Thank you.
We're getting down to maybe the last two? I'm Dave Diddy, and I live on 5 Colonial Drive in Scarborough. I'm not a property of butter, but my neighborhood, obviously, is. A lot of the concerns I have are similar to what you've heard tonight from a lot of people. They mentioned before, you know, there was one point in time where I think actually part of Payne Road actually washed out, and they had to block the road and shut it because some of the erosion that came through. The highway department can confirm that a little bit more, but I just know, generally speaking, looking at the wetlands and some of the wetlands delineation that I saw up there, it was so finely defined and tuned, you know, I've never seen it stripped that perfect before. So, just a little bit better assessment of what actually is wetlands out there. I've walked that land plenty of times. You know, they're very likely to be vernal pools out there. It's constantly wet. I know that EarthTech did a study of the whole Haggis Parkway development area back in, you know, when they were getting ready to build Haggis Parkway, and Scarborough Sanitary District did have a development plan to soar the area. In particular, they were concerned with the heritage acres development and the septic systems. I know you talked about this already, I think in your last meeting. Unfortunately, until I got this letter in the mail, I do appreciate the planning board for sending these out. I had no idea what was going on out there. So, I do thank you for sending these letters out, bringing this to our attention. But that study showed the entire area of the Haggis Parkway development area, the heritage acres development. This contiguous land has got the same soil type, same soil nature. The high groundwater table in that area is a concern. I'm fortunate where I'm across the street, I've got a good sub-basement drainage system, but I know there's water in some of those basements from time to time. I think the clearcutting, you know, looking at the setbacks of the property, I think it's going to cause more problems with the groundwater table in the area, potentially more flooding for some of my neighbors. So, I just wanted to express my concern. It looks like they're trying to cram an awful lot of lots to maximize as much, you know, value of the property as they can. I can certainly understand that, but if you could reassess your layouts and your, I know you're looking for more variance for the frontage, but you only got 15-foot buffer in the back of the houses. I don't know, there's ways you could redo your layout and maybe put a few less houses in, give a little bit more privacy in buffers. And certainly, you know, I know this, all this water flows down and flows under Flaherty's Farm and out into the marsh. You know, there's a critical nature. A lot of people that, you know, make a living with clamming and other stuff in town, that's what this town was built on. I think there'll be a significant issue potentially with people putting Kemlon on all their lawns and everything else, so if you can, you know, I think these lot, you know, in order to get the septic systems to work, I think you're going to have to clearcut and build these big leach fields, and then that's going to be a nice big grassy area that people are going to put Kemlon down. You know, Scarborough, you have to have the greenest lawn in town, so, you know, just a concern for environmental impacts as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roba Bonifant, and I live on 6 Colonial Drive. And I just wanted to reiterate everything that these other people said. I know you said, "Don't repeat," but I feel like I, we can't say it enough, but the property that, this property that they want to build on is beautiful. We've lived there for 30 years, and it is like nature. And I know you've already said that we shouldn't get used to that. It is home of many animals. I cross-fender ski in snowshoe out there. There's deer, wild turkey, bunny rabbits, ducks. There's all kinds of wildlife, and I just worry about the impact that building 14 homes would have on the watershed and the, you know, the streams and the water down below it. So, I hope you take that into consideration, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much. And just for the record, Jay alluded to it, we had a couple pieces of written correspondence as well, and a letter from Penelope Taylor, and another letter from Jacob Kramer, and those were distributed to all members and are entered into the record as well. So, thank you for all of that. So, we will turn to the board now, and Rick?
Sure. Hey, what zone is this? What zone are we in?
R2.
Okay. Oh, I see. It's running really tiny. All right. Probably should have let Robin go first, so she could ask about these wetlands. This, this little piece of wetland, like, we need the road there. Are you, yeah? What are we doing with that?
We're proposing to fill that.
Okay, so you're just going to fill that and dig it out some more?
That's the, that's the 9,000 square feet of impact we're talking about.
Okay. And then with the 50-foot setbacks from the stream that you're looking for on, on 5 and 7 instead of the 75, that still meets all the DEP requirements?
We would need a permit by rule associated with that.
Just a permit by...
Yes, okay. We'd maintain a 75-foot setback to the, to the, to the building envelope itself, so the, the building would be 75 feet back. If we remove the trees and put lawn within that 25-foot, they would consider it a soil disturbance, so we would need a permit by rule for that disturbance within that 25 feet.
All right. Okay. And then, okay, and then, and this is 35 mile an hour zone right there, so how much line of sight do you have?
Yeah, we did, we did measure the site distance. I think it was part of the report. From the driveway, we had 950 feet looking to the left and 550 feet looking to the right. So, you know, I appreciate that they're, they're going faster there, probably than the 35 miles per hour. I've only ridden that road enough to know that, you know, the speed is probably going quicker than that. What I would say is, you know, just based upon those site distances, is there's more adequate site distance in that driveway.
All right. Site distances, you could drag that out a little bit. Yeah, I think I might let Robin talk to him, because he has the permit by rule. Yeah, I'm all right. I don't see anything wrong with it.
Rachel?
I have a strange question. Could, could you talk to me about the bunny rabbits there?
Oh, I've seen wild rabbits there.
You have to go up your mic.
Yeah, I need to go back up, so.
I've seen wild rabbits there once in a while, not in the recent future. I mean, the recent, not recently, but in the past.
Is, is the land heavily forested, or is it more scrub?
It's, it's heavily forested. We get down to the, to water, the marsh, it's more open, but there's a lot of scrub brush in there.
All right, there, there is a provision for the preservation of habitat for the eastern jackrabbit.
Cotton tails.
The eastern cotton tails, yeah.
I saw 12 of them there. Two tails.
Yeah. So, it doesn't, it doesn't immediately address the way the property is laid out, but it does raise the, the question of the use of that open space as a preservation area for the eastern cottontail. That would really allow that space not just to be open, but to preserve a, one of the natural habitats that's left in, in Scarborough. I know when Pleasant Hill Benjamin Farms was being looked at, there was a question about the, about the preservation there, whether the habitat was suitable, and it seems to me that at some point, there's actually funding available for that. I would hate to see, I would like to see something done with that open space, let's say, that really does preserve what we have in terms of, of the wildlife. I suspect that this development is, will be going through with some details worked out, but I would also like to see perhaps more of a plan around the open space. Let's save the bunny rabbits.
Thank you.
That was me. Okay. So, Sean, have you checked the Beginning with Habitat maps and other Endangered Species Act?
That's a good question. I, and I, you know, I, I can't say, I know I personally have not, but I will certainly have to check my records.
Super, let's follow up on that. And the next question is for staff. So, I'm looking at the subdivision, I'm looking at the subdivision review, Chapter 406, Section 4K, that says, "Whenever suited, situated, and who are in part within 250 feet of any pond, lake, stream, river, wetland or tidal waters, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of such body of water or wetland." So, do the conservation subdivision sort of allow that to be relaxed from 250 to the 75? Is that where that comes from, the setback 250 feet?
Well, I think the 250 feet is, we have a 250-foot setback from, from identified, from the higher order streams. I guess I'm not sure what the, quite the right terminology is, so, I guess I don't have the language right in front of me, so...
No, it says 250 feet of any pond, lake, stream, river, wetland, or tidal waters. Whenever situated within that, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of such body of water or wetland, or unreasonably affect the shoreline of such body of water or wetland. And I was just wondering, what I'm getting at here, Sean, is, is if we have 250 feet and to ask us to relax it from 75 to 50 or more, I think is, to me, is out of the question, kind of thing, so...
But my two, and I've been doing a few subdivisions in Scarborough in the past, but when I was reading, when everyone was going with 250, that, to me, was always getting back to the shoreline zoning issue in terms of...
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I'm totally with you.
Like a wetland being at that point, a freshwater wetland, 10 acres and that type of thing?
Agreed, but I think we're pushing it here. I think we're pushing it here as far as the number of, of parcels is concerned, kind of a thing. So, just understand that it's late, I'm being very direct, and probably not very diplomatic, and that the relaxation...
And, um, that's fine. Again, I'd better know where we're coming from.
Yeah.
I would just say, as again, I think, I'd like to go back. If you do net residential here, we're allowed to do 24. I mean, just by net residential. So, I don't want people to think that, you know, we're trying to clam every last one into this, this development that we can possibly get into.
Sure. Talk to me about the date of the wetland study.
It was originally done in 2011, but Gary Fulton from my office went back out there again last fall, and I think you actually had, I forget, Jim Logan as well, was doing the soils and did some additional wetland work as well.
So, we just need to understand that 2016, we were in drought conditions, and I've said it a million times, probably half a million times to you, just that the drought conditions that we've experienced in 2016 that lingered into 2017 do not provide a good baseline for establishing where the delineation of the, the edge of the, the wetlands are, Sean. And so, so we are, I'm going to err on the side of caution in a lot of things and setbacks and things like that, because maybe the, the wetland, the edge of the wetland that was observed in 2017 is actually not quite the edge of the setback that it would be normally in, in, under normal conditions.
And again, and I would appreciate that, but again, I want to look at this side. As you can see, it's, it's got some good topography to it.
It does, but it also has, you know, we haven't checked the Beginning with Habitat map, so it's got some good, it could potentially have some significant and critical habitat too. And I don't want to belabor the points, but I also want to understand when the timeline for the build-out will be, because if this is, we are just going to get site plan approval and put this in a drawer so that we can build it at some point when there's not such a building demand, then I want us to reexamine in, like, say, say this plan gets subdivision approval, and it sits in a drawer for five years, and in five years, Scarborough Sanitary District decides, "Wow, we've had so much development down Payne Road, we should reopen whether or not we're going to extend that 3,000 feet down to, to this subdivision area here." So, I guess I'm leaning toward, if the build-out isn't going to be imminent, then we might want to have some type of condition of, of approval that says, if it's over, you know, before it moves forward, we should check with Scarborough Sanitary District. Just putting it out there. The last, one of the last things I want to talk about is this 14 septic systems. One of the last times you were here, I asked, "Is there any way we could do some type of coordinated or group sewer system like they do it on ponds and camps and things like that, Sean?" Was that explored at all with the applicant, the developer?
You mean a common system?
Yes.
I didn't remember that conversation, to be honest with you.
Oh, no.
But I don't think, I don't think your ordinance allows it, does it, Jay?
Does it not allow?
A common septic system, I don't think is allowed. A common septic system, I don't think is allowed for a residential subdivision.
You know, I'm not certain of that. I'd have to have a conversation with our zoning administrator who-
That's my recollection. But again, I'd be honest with you, I don't remember that conversation in terms of a common system.
Nope, that's fine.
I know there was some, please go see the sanitary district and make sure, you know, I did do that, but-
Yeah. I think we gotta have something here, because when I looked at the groundwater impact analysis, I studied, it looks like there, thanks for including all the test pits, that was good information. We got 10, 20, 32. So, we got 32 that are sort of in the C range and six test pits that were in the D range, and D is unsuitable. And C is, what's generally C, is that, is that the, um, hydroxic soils?
C, no, no. I think it's the other way around.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I'm wondering if maybe, because this is such a complex site, if maybe a peer review of the groundwater impact study and analysis might be appropriate, because I was concerned where they got the K, their conductivity value, based on the deer field and the wall pole soils that were there. I don't know about using a K value of four feet per day for those soils, so I would just question that. So, oof, I'm tired.
I can appreciate that.
I'm so sorry.
Again, I know, no, no, you don't have to apologize. We thank you.
I'm really sorry for the directness, but wanted to put it all out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Okay, so, I'm gonna start with Angela. Can you go over what you were saying about the wetlands?
Well, actually, this is a good picture, because I think it's really lots, I'm gonna say nine through 14, that upper portion. You can see the contour lines all heading towards really the, in the center of the site, that's where the wetlands began there, the larger piece. And then it obviously does like a sort of a ditch line that connects it and feeds into the lower portion of the wetland. So, basically, that's bisecting everything. So, from, basically, from that section up, all that water is no longer going to the wetlands below. And I understand what Sean was saying about down below the wetlands where they converge is gonna continue to get water because it crosses Payne Road, but there's also the finger that goes up that doesn't come from Payne Road that will no longer have water going to it. And so, to say that that's not impacted, I think there's potential it would be. So, in order, so what I'm saying is, less than 10,000 square feet might not be the true case, that when you stop having water feeding to that, it might be more like 20,000.
So, did you say you had a solution as well?
Yes. Well, what I was thinking is that, we're already talking about doing individual lot plans, which we do a lot of times from this board, is a condition that as they come in for billing permit, I work with contractors to develop a lot-by-lot kind of grading plan. I think in this case, if you took some of the area of these lots, and I'm talking like the back portion of the back lawns, basically, and you created like a common swale that runs along the upper portion, or like I said, the back of those lots, and they all join and then can cross Lot 8's driveway, it would give an opportunity to feed that. You know what I'm saying? So, but you can't do it on a lot-by-light basis, because I'm gonna, I could have Lot 11 come in and then 14 and then nine, and then they wouldn't be able to have that common swale that connects them. You know what I'm saying? It needs to be a master kind of plan of the grading in that respect.
Does the applicant have any general thoughts on a proposal such as that?
Yeah, no, I think that's, and I, and maybe I didn't quite understand what Angela was coming, but I, you know, we're talking a swale along, you know, I'm assuming we're talking like a gentle grass swale that would kind of just pick everything up and drag it down there so they could still be kind of used. But, yeah, we'd be more than happy to do it. I actually did ask if I could come see you, so I'll sit down with Angela. We'll work something out.
Okay. Well, that's resolved. So, I'm pretty sure from the name of this, I've got a good idea of what it is, but I'd like a little bit more detail on what a common force main is. What is it?
It's, it would be like if, if it wasn't a force main, like the sewer out in the road?
Go real basic. I don't work in sewers.
Right, so-
So, are we talking a pipe this big in the ground?
No, it'd be about two inches.
Okay, so you got a two-inch pipe in the ground that you're gonna run the entire length of the road?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. And then each one of these lots would have its own individual pump. It's a little fiberglass thing, you know, so your sewer pipe out of your house would come gravity to a little pump station, okay? That pump station would pump to a smaller force main. That smaller force main would come from your yard and tie into the common force main within the road.
Okay. And the sanitary district's telling you to put those in?
He said if he, if there was anything, he said if he wanted anything, then that's all he would want to be done out there, is to put that common force main down the road. I personally, if the sewer comes out there and we need to do services to each one of these lots, and each one of these lots is gonna have, then, you know, at that point, putting a common force main down the shoulder of a road or, you know, in a ditch line or something along those lines seems to be the, one of the simplest parts of the whole thing, so.
But that's done post-buildout?
Correct. Which would be the whole thing too, right. The post-buildout would be the pumps, the services, the every, all the pertinences that go with it, the cleanouts.
So, if you sold all those lots and built them out, and then 10 years later, you expect the sanitary district to knock on your door and you're gonna go back and put it in?
No, we won't be putting it. Absolutely not. You saw the eight corners when they did that whole sewer system all through there, and they put a sewer down and through there, and if your septic was working, fine. If not, then here's your, here's your fee to put it back in.
Who puts that in later, 20 years from now, 10 years from now?
If sewer gets out there from the sanitary district and there's a service there happening through there, then it's gonna be the water.
Okay. And I think that goes back to my original concern, which is convincing 14 people to chip in for a system like that is never gonna happen. So, I mean, that's-
I don't want to jump in, except, when the sewer came down through Black Point Road, the company, they're all tired. The sewer district paid to have it go down by my house, but I had to pay to connect.
Yes.
So, I don't see any difference between that and what we're talking about here. The sewer did come down, you know, the sewer district would bring the water, would bring the main to the, down the road, if it was a public, if it's a public road, if it's gonna be, you know, town on the road, it's just gonna-
So, the sewer, the sanitary district would actually run it down that road? Is it Tucker Brook Road or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. They would run it right down there. They don't just drive it by Payne Road and then ask all those owners to connect out to Payne, do they?
I can't answer that.
It would be a matter of what their project scope was.
Right, that's what, I mean, if they're-
I want a better understanding of the-
If they're going through the whole process of running it down Payne Road, I mean, the point of that process would be to pick up all the houses and residences that are off-
Correct.
The side roads from Payne Road, Payne Road, and the side road. So, my anticipation would be, yeah, that's, that would be the whole point of it at that point in time.
Okay.
I guess, I just wanted to chime in. We just did that down Broad Turn Road, though, and some of those smaller cul-de-sac ones, we did not connect. They were not connected in. For that reason, it's, their septic's were working and there was no reason to.
No interest.
And there was additional cost for the sewer district, which they would not incur.
Wasn't there also a case with distance from the line?
The lateral.
Certain distance from the line.
We're keeping you up. I don't think we're gonna get the system designed today.
All right, so, the 50-foot reduction, I'm not in favor of that on those two lots. Wetlands, you know, back in the good old days, see, I've been kicking around this board for a little while, there was a time when we wouldn't let you have any wetlands on any private property. And I'm sure you put a couple of subdivisions through here and we made you move those lot lines around. I'm just gonna point that out. So, I don't favor the 50-foot reduction on your buffers on those two lots. And I have a question from staff. Do we want a peer review on wetland delineation and varietals pools? I would be okay with a peer review on this, considering, so the points that Robin's brought up regarding maybe some of the data that they have on these delineations might be from a drier season, you know, I like to see, I guess, wouldn't be a bad thing. And that is it for my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Roger?
The only, the only comment I would have is on Tucker Brook itself and the concern of the butters and the erosion. Is that something that town has, you know, with the ditching along Payne Road, would that have any effect on that? It sounds to me like maybe the water's running down Payne Road, it's getting diverted into that.
No, I think it's more the water coming through the culvert crossing Payne.
Oh, is that what it is?
And I think it's actually now, it's, it's higher than the stream bed. So, it's, you know, it's definitely eroded.
Okay.
So, if you're asking, eventually, yeah, it would be, it's in the town right away, that culver, so it would be the towns responsible for replacement.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Is this gonna have a homeowners association?
Yes, because we have the pond to take care of.
Okay, that's, yeah, the pond to take care of. If we have the homeowners association, I would like to have a note that you have to seriously consider the suggestion to not chemi, to use no chemicals on the lawns, or something that's gonna be right flat, smap in the middle of a wetland. No clearcutting. It's different, you take down trees to build a house, but you know, no clearcutting. What was the other one? There's another one. There's one, two, three, no clearcutting. Oh, did we check the varietals pools?
We did. Actually, Jim Morgan made us review of that.
And then you didn't find any?
He did not.
Okay. I really like the idea of getting the, let's look for bunnies, and that's a brilliant idea. And the density impacts on the marsh, that's my thing. I'm not talking about white pines, I'm talking about the marsh. And anything that we can do to mitigate the impact on this wetland, I can't, we can't keep you from doing this, but anything that we can do, by the way, you never get used to this. Somebody said you get used to it after a while. No, you never get used to the lots of really attractive land where there's nice things going on. You never get used to it. And I'm also concerned about the speed on Payne Road presently and what might be able to be done if we're gonna put all these houses that's sitting on Payne Road there. So, I guess that's enough for tonight.
Thank you. I guess I will just pick up on the question on peer review of wetlands delineation, and I agree that that's something that should be done under the circumstances. I also agree with the habitat assessment, whatever, whatever format takes, where we just have to coordinate if you're comfortable with that. And I agree with what Ms. Ogles said about Payne Road, and we come up against this periodically, where we all know that every time I crest that hill, I check my speed and I'm going 15 miles an hour over the limit. I have to be conscious about slowing down. So, you know, if it meets the site distance, then so be it, but I, you know, that's something to sort of put out there. We've talked earlier tonight about things the town has done and maybe could do further on Black Point Road where there's a particularly dangerous set of circumstances, so that may be, maybe something appropriate to explore as that stretch gets more developed. And despite the town's and DOT's best efforts, people still use Payne Road to get to and from Exit 42 in Cabela's. And so, it is a, you know, and I remember back when that was being discussed, you know, the fact that it's officially designated as a feeder road, it sort of is what it is. So, given that and given the potential for future development, that may be something to explore, whatever form that takes. So, I do, I do want to make sure I, as one of my other, one of my colleagues noted, commend the applicant for reaching out to the land trust, and hopefully that will all come together if this goes forward. So, beyond that, hopefully that's useful for the applicant. Hopefully, this was a good use of the time late this evening, and we can keep things moving.
No, no, thank you. Again, we don't want to belabor the point either. We appreciate your time. We appreciate that. It was very tight, so, actually, it's nice.
Thank you. We have a staff report.
Yes, so, keep it brief. Just a reminder that we do have a workshop on the Downs on March 6th. We have a meeting before then as well, but just want to, this is gonna be outside our regular scheduled meeting. We sort of have it set up for about an hour and a half, and we'll try to be conscious of that as we go through and see how we do. Also, just note that the Downs folks are gonna be doing a preliminary presentation, discussion, really discussion more with the council next Wednesday, February 7th. If any board members are interested, that's a workshop before the regular scheduled meeting. It's really sort of just a meet and greet introduction more than really a quick question.
Jay, I have a quick question. I won't be able to, I would love to come to the workshop on the 7th of February next week. Gentlemen, can you take it outside?
Sorry, folks, we need to just wrap up our meeting. Thank you.
I would love to come to that, but I'll be away. And I was just wondering about the format for the, for the March workshop that we're having. Will we be given information a week or two ahead of time like we normally would for a planning board?
Yep. So, I started talking with their, with their representatives, and, yeah, we anticipate sort of going through our typical three-week submission deadline. We're gonna notify butters, but what I sort of see the layout being is more an open table and more of a discussion-
Oh, that's great.
Rather than sort of the board's typical sort of sitting and judgment. This is really sort of more discussion in terms of master planning and really having more of that open discussion.
I love it.
No gavel's allowed. So, hopefully, board members appreciate that approach. We think that's really the way to have a master plan discussion. When we get into the details of a site plan subdivision, that's when we sort of need to do this more regulatory, judgmental style, but I-
And as we saw, I mean, I thought it was a useful discussion when they were here last meeting, but as we saw, that we could easily spend a whole evening talking about that, so I think it makes a lot of sense to just break out an hour and a half to just focus purely on that. And I think as a, as a housekeeping note, the 6th is a-
Tuesday, I believe it is.
Yep. I don't think we had any administrative amendments?
No, sir?
No. Planning board correspondence, we already noted what we all received. Anything else to report? No. Planning board comments, I'll just quickly note, the next meeting, just, sorry, February 20th is a Tuesday because of the President's Day holiday. I'll also note that I will not be at that meeting, so Mr. McGee will be chairing that. Anything else?
I would just like to ask, I really appreciate the, you know, getting everything delivered in our bags kind of a thing, but when we have septic, like large septic issues like this, I wouldn't mind getting copies of the groundwater analysis and test pit logs and things like that delivered in my, our packages kind of a thing, because those types of things are interesting to me.
So, so, those are just, so, that's why we have the Dropbox. That's where, so, if you want something printed, I think if you give staff a call, we can facilitate that, but it's hard for us to know which, who wants a large landscape plan, who wants a-
Apparently, Rick needs-
I want all the wider fonts. Larger lighting plan, a larger zoning font. So, if there are, if you have particular needs, give us a call, send us a quick email, and we can run that stuff off.
Thanks.
We're happy to do that.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
No discussion?
That was my first.
Nice. Congratulations.
But wait, there's more.